I. Yes. All right. All right. Hold stand. So, I pledge to supervise of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We'll call. Hold on. She's coming.
All right, we thought we had everything in the back.
Hey. Councilmember Emmeline Baker?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Keller?
Present.
Miller?
Here.
Mayor Fallon?
Here.
All right. Any additions or amendments to the agenda?
We do our revised agenda from what was originally published. We did not receive any applications for letters of interest for council until after publications were sent out or revised. We now have four of them reviewed. We did actually receive one at 4:07, technically past the deadline, but we'll figure to leave that to you guys as council decide how strict you want it to be.
Okay. All right, so motion to approve the adopted consent agenda.
I move that we approve A, approval of January 9th, 2023, city council meetings; B, ratification of bills in the amount of $134,972.04, and hold seat over for this guy.
Okay.
Second.
We'll wait for a roll. We'll call vote. Councilmember Emmeline Baker?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Fallon? Aye. Okay, so public hearing? All right, move on to action items. And Butch, where did you want seat?
Seat is approved a noise waiver for June 24th, 2023, for a wedding in Marine Park. This is one I always have an issue with because it goes past the time the card closes. And go there. We have not had a noise issue this last year. We had an issue with somebody going into the channel during one of these wedding receptions and a young lady almost losing her life. So, I am very hesitant to approve these now past the closing time of the court. So, we vote on this, my vote will be no.
What would be the normal closing time?
10 o'clock.
10 p.m. I am.
How does, I guess I'm curious how someone falling in the channel had anything to do with that.
Could be alcohol.
Right. Does that have anything to do with it?
No, but by sledding, approving them staying later. You know, instead of, we said no, then they would probably have to shut down and go out.
Still possible. It still exists because someone could fall into the channel anytime.
I'm like, for me, I don't want to be an accessory.
Is by approving this somewhat, I guess my question is, how is that the city's responsibility versus the port owned and maintained property? They're just asking for a little leniency in this process. It seems to me that the port's responsibility is that property.
It is.
And then, let me, John, can you answer, was it, it was brought up that the gal, she went into the channel. So, that wasn't late at night, was it? Was it, it was still daylight, it was summer, but it was like eight or so.
30, 9 o'clock somewhere.
Right. And so, it didn't have a bearing on the length of the event.
Well.
So.
That event could have started earlier.
Well.
But I guess to your point though, I mean, if it's alcohol related, I mean, that's somebody perhaps being over served. That's on the responsibility of the licensed, you know, provider that's bartending.
I appreciate your concern, Butch, and I also recognize that weddings are, events are a big part of our Marine Park draw and that this particular group went to the trouble to ask for a certain amount of time. I feel like that, again, I would maybe offer some leniency. Let me continue to book weddings here and this would allow to clean up time and.
Well, we don't know about that. They might be cleaning up.
Right.
I think what they're asking for is a noise waiver to, we know, look at the.
To play music probably. To go till 11:00, then stop it. Historically, we, the council, have been approached for similar waivers and I can't remember if we ever denied one last year.
No.
No, we haven't.
We did find out last year that we were getting some waivers that hadn't been approved by the court. But that's been changed.
That's been changed, yeah. So.
But I think you're right, and these, it's, I think it's a pretty, it's almost an honor. People think this is a very special day and this is where they've chosen to come and celebrate this special day and it's pretty neat that they want to be here for that. We're talking June 24th, is that right? What time does sunset? So, to end a wedding at 10 o'clock when the sun went down 30 minutes before that, it seemed sort of a blow. I felt like there was, I went and talked to some of the residents close to Thunder Island Marine Park just to get an idea of anybody who's ever had any issues or complaints and everybody I talked to said, no issues. They never even heard of that, so.
I think it was a good point you brought up about how it's really the responsibility goes on the port and/or the wedding itself.
That's fair.
So, if, so we need a motion to pass or a motion on what we're gonna do.
I.
Go ahead.
I move that we pass the noise request. I have to look at the terminology here. The approved noise waiver for June 24th, 2023, wedding in Marine Park.
Is there a second?
I second.
Hey. We'll call vote. Councilmember Emmeline Baker?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Mayor Fallon? Aye. Okay, so that passes. All right, now we'll go on to the top of the list. Interview and appoint interested citizens for vacant city council positions. So, I appreciate coming, I'm not sure to review, but I appreciate that. And so, has, council, have you had a chance to read over the letters or?
Just starting to read.
I know, I know, I know. I know. So, it looks like we have, yeah, what's the correct pronunciation of your last name?
Tweet.
Tweet, there we go. So, it looks like we have Pam and then we have Brenda Wood. And then we also have Sean. All right, okay. Well, let's see. How about, Brenda, you'll start, we'll start with you. Okay, come on in.
You know, we know you have it. It's formality.
You had your chance, Brenda.
I ran for office.
You did.
I was 200 calls.
You did.
Well, it said a lot that you're here, right?
Yes.
You know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, it said a lot that you said you came back.
I don't know what to do. Yeah, I love our community too.
Do you wanna say why you want to be councillor or?
I'm Brenda Wood, for those who don't know me, and I have served a term of council this past term. And I also coordinate the citywide draft cells. I've been involved with Santa Social, I've done ice cream field trips for our kids all over school here in Cascade Lock. I am very community oriented and I love our little town. And I love listening to people's concerns, the taxpayers that actually pay to live here now. I understand tourism and business and all that's really important as well. But they could both work together and need a great mix if it's done properly.
An advocate for Dry Creek.
I am, I do advocate for Dry Creek and for Forest Lane, just speaking of that proof. So, I like grinding forests that don't want to give up. Only because we have residents that can't run their dishwasher and take a shower at the same time. If there's a fire, we'd be, you know, there'd be an issue if there's not enough water pressure. I've been helping for them for, I think, over a year.
Time.
Over a year. And my promise was when I left council that I wouldn't forget about Forest Lane either. That's a big deal. And that's really all I have.
Do they have questions, Brenda?
I know we've worked together on council before, but I plan to ask the same questions of everybody that's come in. So, what would you say are your greatest strengths, Brenda? What you would be able to bring to the city council?
I think team, open mindedness and being like a team, because we are a team, going after the same goal, hopefully. And I have not tons of knowledge about Cascade Lock, but I do have a lot. I've lived there for 14 years, I'm a homeowner, a business owner as well. So, and I listen to people, I got to meet a ton of people when I have my business downtown next to the post office. I met a ton of people in the town. And I really advocate for things that belong to the community with kids and stuff. I'm a big advocate. I think our school should be back here, our high school and that. I think our kids should be in this town. I think it, you know, we don't have, what I hear when I brought it up is that we don't have, they wouldn't have all the benefits if they didn't go to Hood River. However, there's times that it's not always a benefit. You know, why can't we have it? They had it before here. So, I would like to, you know, more parent participation and get that all in and see how everybody else feels about it. Because for me, I don't actually have any spoiled age children, so, you know, I'm on the grandkids, so. But, yeah. Thank you.
So, I got a question for you. So, what is your availability on attending, and I'm gonna ask everybody that. So, what is your availability of attending conferences, like LLC conferences or any additional training? Have you done any in the last, in the past when you served or can you move them forward? Because I know a lot of it wasn't really brought to our attention and awareness.
Yeah, I'm more than willing, more than willing and I have the time, yes. Yeah, and I have the time and I'm more than willing to travel and do that, learn more and be a part of, learn how the government and all that. Because there's so much to this, I'm learning how to be on budget. It's not just simply City Hall, the city of Cascade Lock, she's got a utilities company, all of it. So, it's, it's much more, it's a bigger picture than like most people would think when it comes to the city.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
I have one. Explain a situation, for everyone as well. Explain a situation which you engaged in civil discourse and as a result gained a deeper understanding of the opposing viewpoint.
I have a business here in town. I came to city council many times because I would get reported for noise. Because I have a little speaker that sat there and played fifty's musics on the nice stage. You sit on the sidewalk and listen to music, everybody loved it. They're dancing outside, all that. However, the location I was at, there was a tenant, a resident right behind. And I had to learn, because I would get the sheriff's office at my business on a busy day, on a Saturday or Sunday and they want to pull you out to talk to you and breaks up all that atmosphere. So, I had to learn what the codes are and how it is and really teach Hood River Sheriff that it's up to the city and people have to write out a noise complaint to the city and then we deal with it. It's not really the place to come there and deal with. But where we have unique situations where you have businesses that are connected to residents, that is a big issue. And I cannot tell you guys how many times I have the police call on my business for nothing, you know?
I don't have any questions about Brenda because her and I have been on council together. I know how persistent she can be. It is a good persistence and I've always appreciated her.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, according in order of the way they were received. Pam? Hello. So, we're gonna go the same, same girl, so. Okay. Why do you want to be city council?
Hi. I almost feel like this is a canned response now because I think I've told a few people this, telling the story of leaving Texas and not knowing where my real forever home was since I came here. So, once I moved here, I just knew it, the pool, of course, was the beauty and I'm an avid, high, very outdoors lover. But I fell in love with the community and the little things that they do and get togethers and how we support the PTO and then I joined the tourism committee and I love the folks there and each one has their own special thing. And I just feel like right now Cascade Locks has, we've had a big change in leadership and it would be a great opportunity to serve the city council and help make informed decisions for the public.
And we all know where that, but what is your, can you tell us a little bit about your background? I'm reading your.
Oh, my personal resume?
Just a little bit of background.
I work for, yeah, I work for small fosterology. I've been there for three years since I moved to Portland. I lived here for three months before I got to top of them. And I've learned so much about environmental science and engineering, civil engineering and planning. And I have no background in that. So, I have learned so much through project management within the company, not project administrator, but I've learned so much about those disciplines. And we have other disciplines that I haven't even got to work with yet, industrial hygiene. It's just a great company, it's at ESOP, it's employee owned. I think I've probably found my forever job, you want to keep your mind open and think where there's good opportunity. But I really believe that these are ups and downs and I know they have its takes to be a great company and doing it in the same time, make communities better.
Cool.
In your position with them, you have a team of people that you work with and or supervise?
I, as a project administrator, I do everything Pam's do for them and then they're more of a polisher, you know, they hold the decision making, so to speak, but I play a big role in what happens administratively and I do manage an office. And I should admit that I'm taking PMP classes, so I do spend, get certified in project management. So, that'll be a big one for me.
And then, the same question I asked Brenda, what skill set, what skills do you have that you think would be positive attributes that you can bring to this Cascade Locks city council?
I think I have talent skill, you know, borderline talent. I feel like I get it a lot, the big picture. I like to know the big picture and I'll seek out the big picture and then dive down into the little things, things that need to do. So, I think that's probably my greatest asset. And then, finding the right answers. I really think that's, or not answers, questions, so we can find our answers. Finding our questions so we can know what's really going on.
Curiosity.
Oh, I'm so curious, but my degree's in anthropology, so you can imagine my interest in everything, so. My area is sociology.
I'll do my question. Explain a situation which you engage in civil discourse and as a result gain a deeper understanding of the opposing viewpoint.
I can honestly say that I don't know that I've had any with myself. I have stepped into fights. I, okay, this is a good experience for me. Here at the market, there were two men about to throw down. And I did step in and say, you know, you need to, if you don't stop, I'm gonna call the police. And whenever I came back out, they were continuing, but de-escalated. And after hearing what they were talking about, you know, I think, why don't you go home and just call each other? So, they just talk about stuff and I don't get so. So, I mean, you take the time to understand the other side. I am one of the most compassionate people because I've been through a lot myself, so I tend to see the other side a lot. You got answers.
You got one? Yeah. What do you think is the biggest need for Cascade Locks?
This is big picture with me. I think we have such a beautiful landscape in limited space that we could do more with what we have already. So, there are things in town, like, you know, I noticed stores and restaurants that are closed down. I think that would be a good opportunity to use what we have. That's probably, I don't, I've had a lot to learn about Cascade Locks. You know, I've been here for a year, so that's probably from the outside looking in, that's what my first would be.
Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it feels so formal. Sean? Same, same girl. Why do you want to be a councillor?
I've always wanted to get into city governance, basically, it's because I moved here from Hood River, just living in Hood River. It's a little bit bigger town and it's established, but you also feel like somebody else is doing that work. And here it's like, oh, it's in reach, it's affordable, it's across the street. I do live literally just.
Oh, so it's literally across the street. That could be a dangerous thing, you know?
And I love this area, more than raised the river, came out here as a kid. Got ice cream out east wind, like everybody. And just want to see this town do well.
And then, we didn't have a resume, do you want to talk a little bit about your background?
Yeah, I currently work as a quality specialist at a engineering firm in White Salmon. It is called Innovative Composite Engineering. We do anything from, anything really carbon fiber, if you can think of, probably made it. We specialize in tubing from aerospace to windsurfing poles, masks and and like working in a job like that as a quality specialist, I'm tasked with making sure that everything that leaves our company is up to rigorous standards. They don't want your airplane or spaceship, you know, crashing because our part was adequate.
Now, long have you been, is it Innovative Composite Engineering?
I C E.
I C E, for sure.
I've been there a little over a year. That started last October.
And have you been in the same position since you were hired?
Yes.
What were you doing before working there?
Before I worked there, I worked in a small aftermarket van company in Hood River. We made products for people who were trying to camper van conversions. I was a CNC machinist and CNC programmer. So, a lot of things that came out of the company had, or I won't touch on.
Got you, see, you gotta move from manufacturing side to more of an inspection.
Yep. Moving from manufacturing to the quality control and inspection and from a relatively lax environment to a very strict, very strict environment.
Smaller company to a bigger one.
Small company to a bigger one and different customers. Different customers and at the smaller van company, I kind of reached my peak high. I worked there for five years and there's me and then there's the bosses, so. The current owners and they were happy with being the sole owners, so. I decided I needed to find a place to keep growing.
And how did you live in Cascade Locks?
I grew up in Hood River in the Igro area, outskirts of town. Always wanted to live here, so after college, I came back, lived with my parents for a little bit, got an apartment and were looking for a place to call home. I was looking in Hood River, Odell, Cascade Locks, just because I knew I wanted to be in the gorge. And Cascade Locks was a place that was affordable. It was a nice house, it was, had a view of Hood River, it checked all the boxes and Cascade Locks is much better than the locks.
Good answer.
Scratch that. Yeah, it was amazing.
She liked it, she read it.
I do like it.
And the same question that I asked, that's what skill sets, you know, skills do you have that you think would be beneficial or you can bring to the table, the benefit of the Cascade Locks city council?
I've been developing in most of my jobs, is to scrutinize the details, make sure that everything is where it should be and how it should be. The details can get lost in the noise, but they matter. They're the difference between something being successful and something being kind of a wash.
All right. Explain a situation which you engaged in civil discourse and as a result gained a deeper understanding of the opposing viewpoint.
This is tough. It's like, I have, I lean more middle left, I guess, and I have some friends that are very conservative and they're always the guns or your copyright and like do it yourself because it's better and why should we depend on the government so much? And I was like, well, the people that can't depend on the government should be still taken care of. And so, when, and I think there are some other things, I think, well, maybe the government should take care of them, but also not, it shouldn't be a complete handout, which I do agree with. It's a complicated balance of being enough that no one's left wanting, but not enough to make everybody comfortable if not doing anything.
Point of order, if I may ask a question that I can also go back to the other two candidates as well. Because I hadn't heard it through everything. If you had.
everything. If you had one passion to see something different in Cascade Locks in five years and a passion about something that didn't change, could you just name one thing that you could see different and one thing that you hope stays the same?
In this town, I love how small and close knit it is. And I would not wanna really see that change. Like, we have local businesses here. We don't have McDonald's. I would, like, even if McDonald's would be high sometimes up here, it's probably better than McDonald's. So I'd like it to stay like a locally owned, locally run place. If I could see something change, I would say that just some of our, like, grow and continue to grow, utilize spaces that aren't being utilized, change in ways that keep us not stagnant.
Good. Uh, biggest need for Cascade Locks?
It's a tough one. We have a lot of things that could be great and but.
We don't have all that.
Um, my wife is a school teacher and she has taught a little bit at Cascade Locks, but she currently is teaching in Hartdale. And I always think about like, when she did summer school in Cascade Locks, there were big kids who lived here in Cascade Locks for, for many years, who have never been to her apartment. And just somehow like getting in with our schools and like helping that outreach, showing like the ma, taking along major walks around here, taking them to the park. I mean, it's a, it's right there. There's a beach, there's within access and our school age kids that are here have never seen it. It was just one of those things. I was like, that could be something could change and wouldn't even take that much. Thank you.
I know. Everybody good?
Well, you asked a question, I felt, Brenda, that we didn't really get answered from Pam, and I'd like to hear Sean's answer too about just availability to participate outside of our meetings, like extra training and meetings outside of the place.
I'm available Fridays and weekends. I work four tens, so generally during the week I'm busy, but anything else other than that, I'm pretty open for things, going places, not a problem.
And I know with, uh, League of Oregon Cities and with all their trainings, they do give you the memory card. So gave you one and.
L O C has a lot of virtual training, so all that stuff's recorded.
Pam, we didn't hear your answer on that question.
Yeah, I'll maybe even say more than I should. I've seen the last two children. Yeah, I live for volunteer and do things for community. I mean, I cleaned up and, um, you know, done roadside cleanup, anything to help. Um, learning is, um, I mean, I love to learn, so I would love to do that. I have plenty of time off that I can take the work to go and do these things.
Your work schedule's flexible.
Yeah. And Pam, I hate that I thought of this question later, but if something were to be changed in five years, what would you like to see and, and something that you really want to stay?
Um, I think what I told Butch about, you know, cleaning up the downtown area is what I would want to change. And what I want to keep is a small little community and our water access and our trails. And I really want to make sure that drink, you know, is free of cigarette ads and, you know. I think that's what I do.
Well, you'll probably be happy to know that in June, the League of Oregon Cities is having a small meeting here in Cascade Locks. The topic is main street progress.
Brenda, I didn't ask this of you either. What would you like to see changed in five years and what should we say, keep the same?
I would like to see changed in five years. Our police and safety EMS and all that get stronger. Our U N F has changed a lot in the past few years. I'd like to see that continue to grow and more of a police presence, um, whatever that looks like. Um, and I also agree with the downtown area. Um, you gotta have things in place because then people don't wanna rent, they don't wanna sell, they don't wanna do anything but leave the building fall apart. Until you have some ordinances and people that can enforce this stuff and where you can find them, you're not, it's not gonna be resolved. So I would like to see the downtown area too, but I am one that actually had to go out of business because nobody wants to rent or sell downtown.
Thank you. Everyone feels like they've had other questions answered. So now it comes out, we have two openings and we have three applicants. So discussion, we've gotta pick two. So can we start with one and then go with the other or? I'm just gonna say this is difficult. Sounds like really great people. It's really tough. Yeah. It's really, really tough.
One thing I look right now is that, I think Brenda, because she's been on council, has got a leg up there. She's got the experience. She knows the, the problems we're facing right now. Uh, she knows the projects we're working on. And, uh, Pamela has got great educational background and, uh, when I was at the L O C meeting in Hermestown, one of the, the criteria they use for picking council members in positions like this is to take somebody out to one of your other committees, out of your budget, out of your tourism, out of your planning commission, bring them on. And so she's got plus points there. Uh, Sean? I think you've got some nice ideas for Cascade Locks, but I would urge you to join up in some of these other committees first and, uh, return some of the budget. And get more of a feel for what's going on. That's where I started, is I started with budget committee and, uh, and then I was on planning. And we have openings. So that's where I'm sitting.
Councilmember Denise?
Your thoughts? Oh, it's difficult. Butch made some very good points. Um, I have seen Pam Tweet's work with, um, on the trails and other committee work. Um, so I'm familiar with her dedication and that. I love seeing Brenda dedication on council. I also appreciate, um, Sean's point of view as an engineering detail specialist as well. So I am still moving things up.
This is difficult. Uh, it's really hard to be under pressure and make a, a decision here. Um, I guess I like the intuitiveness and the intellectual thought, um, behind Pam and, um, that's where I'm leaning there. And, um, I'm between the other two candidates, they, I'm weighing the pros and cons of what they can bring to the council. So I'm still open to ideas.
That's council.
Well, I just think, uh, I think it's great that we have, you know, two spots to fill and we have three candidates that were here this evening. So appreciate all of you submitting an application and answering our questions in the end here. Um, like Butch said, I feel like, you know, Brenda, you've got, you've been on council and you know the key issues. Um, it's a very stimulating time for me to be back into the position to be able to continue to move those things forward. Um, and, and I, so you've been working on the budget committee, is that right? Sure, sure. Okay. So I wasn't aware of that, but thank you for pointing that out. And I definitely think that that's a, you know, um, starting on some of the subcommittees and, you know, it's a good way to get involved with the, uh, city and what's happening because all of those other committees are again, providing information to us that we then oftentimes, we're not really making policy as much as we are supporting those other committees that are already, um, given their, I guess, recommendation. So I think it's a good way to kind of get started. Um, and I appreciate you being here. I think that it's been mentioned before, uh, Mayor Tom's brought up so many times, that the city, you know, really the powers in the council and our ability to, to reach a decision together. And so I think as I'm deciding, you know, who's gonna be these two people that are gonna be joining us, it's about, uh, people that can bring, uh, I guess, healthy discourse, you know, uh, ask the right questions and listen to those answers, even if you don't agree with what the other person is saying. Um, and then being able to, uh, Jeremiah has brought up so many times about, you know, you gotta be comfortable just sticking your neck out there and making decisions. And we can't please everybody, so you have to also have some pretty thick skin. So.
And not kick the can.
To quote you, Jeremiah.
Okay. Uh, I, it's three amazing candidates. Um, it is very, very challenging and it's very tough. Um, I know, Brenda, I appreciate you and your experience and stepping up to the council and whatnot and being here for the last three years, right?
Yeah.
Three years. Um, Pam, I, your resume and everything, your thought process, I really appreciate that. Um, Sean, the engineering aspect, I will never be an engineer in mine. So I have an engineering mind that, you know, I find of value. Um, these are really tough positions. So whoever doesn't get voted in tonight, I would really encourage you to get on a committee somewhere. Please, you know, just stay involved in the community. Um, but, um, for me, um, probably leaning, there's so many new changes here, um, in the city. We have a new administrator, new finance. I'm not a new new, but new in this position. And we're going through things that we, from what I know, the last two years have not experienced. So we're gonna have town halls and, um, we're going to go into planning and, um, as our article, for those of you who haven't seen it in the paper, it's, I just gotta share this. But, um, it says, front page, Cascade Locks City Council plans to be inclusive. So I was really happy to see that. And so I think, um, moving forward, you know, looking for new, fresh ideas, um, my vote would probably be with Pam and Sean. Uh, Brenda, I value you immensely. I see you, like, you could so run, like, the, a lot of the surveys we're gonna do because you have boots on the ground and know the residents really well. And I think that would be a really, I think that would be a real, you'd be an amazing asset.
So we need a motion and, um, should we move forward with each of the candidates, I guess, individually? So I, I believe that we felt one of the vacant positions, but Pam, I think there's some consensus there.
I second that.
Roll call vote? Councilmember Everlyn Baker?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Fowler?
Aye.
And I move that we include Brenda Wood as the city councilor.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote? Councilmember Everlyn Baker?
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Open, hyper discussion?
Yes, yes, please.
As you can see, I'm an advocate for civil discourse. And so Butch, I, my question to you is at what point is new vision and new ideas that Sean brings to this, how does Brenda's knowledge and experience here over, outweigh that in your opinion?
I think it totally outweighs her because what we need now is experience. Uh, you look at this council right now and Kathy and I are the, the two longest members to it and we're only been on it for two years. So I, I think more, more explicit than Brenda's put in the time, you have attending meetings, her and I both sat in these meetings for years before we even came on council. We are in this thing. So and I appreciate new ideas and stuff, but, uh, you know, I, I didn't get any pointed answers on exactly what Cascade Locks needs. And that's what I was looking for. And I know already knew Brenda's. She's standing prior to us even questioning.
I, I did hear that Sean was interested in, um, expanding the opportunities for our children as one of the things in school, and that was the non-official and yet community survey number three of our of the seventy-five sheets, forty-two for that, with fifty-eight being what everybody said, the, the businesses to be thriving and whatnot.
And how much control do we have with the schools?
And more activities for all ages, um, is what I'm hearing from Sean, and that was number two. So I just want to point out, you know, that we were saying what is a positive there from, from Sean. It's, this is a hard vision for me. I'm glad we all found one that that we, that.
It's so much harder.
I know. And because I do agree that, oh my goodness, I'm going to speak at the end of the meeting about the committees. There's so much power and work to be done through our committees, you know, and I'm excited about that. I'm excited to work with the committees. So I again hope that whomever isn't chosen will dedicate themselves to at least one of the committees, if not voluntary counselor.
It seems like this decision is really about, are we really opting for a fresh perspective? Or are we looking for someone that's got prior experience and that wisdom that comes from over years of serving in the council?
I think we, we have enough fresh perspective work now. And what we need is some continuance of what we've been working on. And I know the persistence that Brenda has and how hard she works in pushing subjects too. And, you know, and what she's talking about with Forest Lane, we have a lot of work we need to do with Forest Lane. We have a new bike path that's coming down I eighty-four and stuff, which is gonna increase flights on Forest Lane. So we need to start figuring out how to get money to get a bike path in there and maybe a little widening of that street, you know, so. And she's well aware of this stuff.
Any other discussion? It's been.
Well, I do think it's also noteworthy to mention it was a very close race and we're talking like eight votes, right?
Five.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Five votes.
So I think that's also really good mention as well.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. And she put the time and put her name in and it went around.
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion? If we did not decide tonight or vote in majority, what would happen? If we did not decide tonight or vote in majority, what would happen? Well, we have two, and we do need a full council. So we need to, I would encourage everybody that we need to decide on one more. Correct?
Yeah, but I think if we didn't, I think if we didn't, if we couldn't reach a majority vote on either of the two existing candidates and they continue to collect applications, we kicked a can down the road a little bit.
I do see that, I think it's, it's good to note on the record that Judah Cox, the manager of the grocery put in the letter of interest, but I do not see him here.
But yes, his application, if you look at it, was like, it was more timeframe.
He was the gentleman that was seven minutes late. I did email him back, asked him for his presence. I did not hear anything back.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor.
It's been seconded.
It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Everlyn Baker. The motion to.
I'm moving the second.
No. Kathy.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Fowles.
No.
So it doesn't pass. We have to have four of us. So it doesn't pass.
Or no.
For, yeah.
I see your motive due.
Well, let's not, let's not go down that path. Let's not stay inconsistent with Robert's rules of order or anything, so.
So I move that we appoint Sean to the second seat.
I second. Any discussion? I want to point out that this is a really hard decision for me, and I am excited to get this new perspective from a young family member who is involved with the welfare of our school activities in the summer, as well as I'm looking forward to your perspective from an engineering and details point of view, things that I might miss when I'm looking at the overall picture. And that is why I decided to, in this tight race, put my vote towards Sean, and I don't want to overburden Brenda by saying, please, we have both. But that is the hope I have, that you will continue because your voice is so important and has been. But that's why I'm second to nomination. Any other discussion?
I think that Butch brought up a good point about, you know, Sean's got this idea of, if the kids involved, we don't really have a lot of involvement over what the school can do. And that may just be, you know, an indication that Sean hasn't been here to be present to see what our limitations are and what we can and can't accomplish. But there are a lot of things that we can do on city council to, I guess, address the, the need that Sean's bringing up about the kids not getting to Ring Park. So in any case, I think that the point is still incredibly valid that there's kids in this community that, you know, have never been to Ring Park. So expanding those opportunities in whatever way we can to help make this a more lovable community is definitely something that's been addressed and noted by the community members. And Sean's observation of that, I think, really is in line with where the city is as well.
I know you both have children, and I love to see our community and the, so many things that I attend, it's families with children and, and they're asking for part of our planning to include more activities, more, we need daycare, we need preschool, we need, you were talking about that earlier. So I, I feel like that's part of our growth and I love, I think sometimes the young families, you all are bringing this, this driving, this aspect of thriving Cascade Locks. Is there any other discussion? Moved and seconded. Call vote. Councilmember Everlyn Baker.
Aye.
Kathy. Keller.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Mayor Fowles.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. Brenda, can you really?
If I could say anything I wish there was nice serving and stuff, but we need to listen to the people in our community because there was three hundred and five votes that you guys are like
Right.
not taken into account. So I think the people of Cascade Locks, I have done my part, and they will, you know, they'll say what, whether they're happy or not about, but you guys are.
Right, so, thank you, I appreciate that. And I really do hope that you run for a
Yeah, no, no.
community. Okay, and part of being on a council, I want to remind everyone is when something comes along and we disagree so hard lately, that it's really important to remain composed. We may not like everything that, all of our different ideas, but we as a council are one. And so we need to behave and be gracious about it and accept council decisions.
Okay. I agree, but I'm also not going to let you sit there and be like, sure, sure. I mean, we have been at our disagreements and it's no secret to anybody.
Right.
You know, whenever Bobby Walker, our past mayor died, and I went to ask Tom, there was a big controversy over that, that I was doing legal things and stuff, Kathy. And you have not liked me, Brenda.
No, wait a minute, I had nothing to do with that. I actually do, but the whole thing is, the decision's been made, discussion is over.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
The law is a toll on you.
No, I, no, I appreciate your discussion, but please, your time is, your order is done. So I appreciate it. Okay, all right, so Kathy, now you, yes?
Yeah.
Pamela.
Yes. Okay. I, Pamela, wait. Do you solemnly swear, do you solemnly swear that as councillor of the city of Cascade Locks, Oregon, as a firstborn of the city of Cascade Locks, Oregon, I will uphold the Constitution of the United States. I will uphold the Constitution that we had in place, the state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
The city charter and ordinances, the city charter and ordinances, that will faithfully execute the duties and and execute the duties entrusted to me. And
Yes. We had a long, it's been signed.
We did.
I agree.
I.
Do you solemnly swear?
As councillor of the city of Cascade Locks, Oregon.
As councillor of the city of Cascade Locks, Oregon.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
The city charter and ordinances.
The city charter and ordinances.
And will faithfully execute.
And will faithfully execute.
The duties entrusted to me.
The duties entrusted to me.
Thank you for going through the interview process. Now the work begins. Committee is still fun. Okay, next on the list, appointment to committees.
So we actually did have one turn in, but the mayor and I had talked about waiting until we have full council and not knowing if full council will be set tonight, it's not entered in the packet, so we'll be in first packet from February, in fact, February thirteenth.
Okay, great. Are there any others?
No, we do have, oh, Kathy stepped out, we do have budget committee, planning committee, and I think to her is we all have open spots.
Budget committee, how many, how many?
But it's just one.
One, and then what was the other ones?
Planning.
How many on planning?
I think two, actually.
Two?
Yeah.
And are those positions, open positions, or those ones that were appointed and then vacated to serve on?
I do not know.
All right. If I have comments on committees, should I make them now or when it's my turn to speak? This.
You do it now, yeah, I mean, we're talking about.
We're in the committee.
Yeah.
I am so excited about committees. I did go to the is it the community action team meeting, and I would encourage anybody here to go, and our committee members. So I've been looking about at our ordinances for planning commission, and I'm very excited as we talk about our own planning. I don't know if it would be helpful for staff to send the, the ordinances that relate to each committee to them to remind them of how much, we appreciate everything they're doing and, and encourage their, such as planning, is to recommend to a council and other public authorities like the court, plans for regulating future growth, development, beautification of the city, building, work, streets, parks, grounds, vacant lots. I'm excited. I did go to a planning commission meeting last week as well, where there was a focused vote on conditional use of the court. And so, but it's very exciting that I can't wait to hear they, to do the once a year, apparently according to our procedures, that they will, will get a report after every meeting. There will be a joint workshop with council once a year from each of our committees. And that I just, and that is why in part of sharing with the three candidates, the power that these committees have to advise, cooperate with other planning agencies in the state, some of the things that I feel like we're taking on as a council, which is great. But Jordan or this body might feel we can get more done if our committees are also doing that. You know, saying, can you go to this LLC, can you? So I just know that planning commission is going to be a part, a big part hopefully of our strategic planning and what Butch mentioned about the mainstream council, I'm hoping that they're very involved with that, as well as the tourism and beautification committee that and I see that in our, in our council procedures, we have committees that may or may not be in existence. Parks and Rec Committee, Museum, I know is here, and then there's the budget committee. So I'm just wanting to say that I'm hoping that all of our committees can see their procedures and their conflict is called the powers and duties of commission. And then that we will hear soon, when we're going to have our joint workshop, our annual joint workshop, and that we will be getting the reports from them after the meetings. And I would love it if all meetings could be on the city calendar with the agenda so that people knew when they could go. Would it, so I hear you say, would it be, you'd like to see it as an agenda item for our workshop that we're going to have planning? On how committees are? No, I would like to get their reports before our planning so that we can include what they recommend when we're doing our planning. And I would like to have a workshop with each of them, whether it is, my past experience has been once a month, there is a committee that will meet with us for a standing workshop, work session over to the public. And we just hear from, let's say, the arts and, I mean, the tourism and beautification committee, and we have a chance to dialogue for that one hour work session. And then the next month, maybe we do it with planning commission, next month with budget. Of course, we can design that joint workshop another way, however way we want, but that is part of the procedures that I hope to be a part of, and I'm hoping to get a report before, from every committee before we have a planning session. Will it be possible to get reports before planning?
Okay.
Cool. All right, thanks.
And since you're talking about committees, I got reports from that last planning commission meeting, and there's one person on that board who I believe is showing a conflict of interest and needs to be removed.
Do you want to say who it is, or?
Well.
I don't know who's on the planning committee, a whole list, I haven't seen.
What's the procedure, I mean, before we start?
Yeah.
Can you, how would, how would somebody be removed, what is the procedure vote of all persons on the committee, and is there?
Staples in the city charter.
It's in the city charter. It, it's also ordinances, thirty-one point oh one are the ordinances that are relating to planning commissions. So I'll look at those right now. You have the, the big ordinance link that's on our website. Maybe that's something we need time to research.
Right.
In respect of time, I know the tourism committee, there are rules on the tourism committee page, so for planning, there may be the same.
There are also rules regarding by statutes that govern ethics, and I believe these have been violated.
Thirty-nine point oh three membership of member may be removed by the mayor during his or her term for misconduct or nonperformance of duty after public hearing or before council. And I too was at that council meeting, and I think the person you're speaking of made it clear that there would be a conflict of interest for this particular vote and did not sit at council, and I was
Other things going on?
Hey, this sounds like a subject that maybe we can get on next meeting, and, and, yeah, let's do that because we're, we're grabbing.
Sounds like there is a procedure for removing somebody from a committee if they're having to perform.
Yes.
Maybe some organs.
Right, and that is a big valid concern, if you feel like someone or has conflict of interest.
Somehow abusing their position to.
Right, right. So I don't want that to be out in the air because I don't think that was happening. Pete stepped down when he thought there was a conflict of interest related to the wind song HOA. We will all have moments that are
Right.
personal conflict of interest, and we have an ethics, an ethical duty to, to be transparent about that. Absolutely. That's what I heard. Yeah, we're in a small town, everybody's either related or knows one another.
I think it's a real issue that you have so many vacancies, you know, on these committees, as you brought up there, you know, we rely heavily on the input from these committees to make decisions. And if you're running a committee with two vacant seats, that's a lot of brain power that's missing from that committee. And I think we need to do more, can we do more to try to fill these vacant seats? Is it normal to run with empty spots on this committee? It seems like we always have vacancies.
What I'd like to see is this be a part of the conversation for our planning, because this is, this is a challenge for the city. It's, how do we fill those seats? Who's filling those seats? And then once those seats are filled, what are, what is the expectations and duties? Because I think a part of, a lot of it is, like with, one of the committees, they said, well, we just meet when there's, when we have something to talk about, but after reading some things, there's specific guidelines, reports, that's one of them. So, but in all fairness, I don't think some of the, they just don't know. So, but I think it bears further discussion in planning and have that be a part of it to say, and let's just, let's just drill it down and iron out the wrinkles and get that taken care of. And Pete, since we are, this body oversees and guides the committees, who therefore, who then do their research and guide us or recommend, I think she's right, we need to give them some smart goals. I think it's hard to do a meeting when you're not sure, what am I supposed to be doing? Something great, you know, the strategic, smart goals, strategic measurable. Lost my, the A R T.
Accountable.
Accountable.
Or achievable, achievable, achievable.
Timely is the T. But we will, if we can look, all of us look at what the committees are commissioned to do, and then when we are planning, make some smart calls, I think that'll maybe bring people on. Because we might know somebody who we think has those great skills and say, please, come on this committee.
Okay.
And with panel moving into the city council, does that create another vacancy? I was just gonna say, it's now two on tourism, because we had one before, right? Or were you guys?
I thought we had two, still with me.
Okay.
But I'm not.
And I respectfully ask this body to call it tourism and beautification, because that's what it's named, and the beautification piece adds an element of
We need to beautification, we got a lot of tourism.
Yeah, but beautification is, is there trueing, so I'd like to keep saying that.
And I'll, I'll double check those numbers and send them out to everybody.
Okay.
That's gonna be on our project list. Alright, so net approval to apply for Oregon DOE grant.
Alright, now into the meat and potatoes stuff.
There you go.
Alright, so there is a bit of history behind this one, I will try and explain it, so all of the new people, which is just about everybody here, understand it, this is not a new building. It needs a new roof, the roof is leaking. There has been debate on whether to keep this city hall or move to a new building. I don't know if a vote by council was ever looked at, or kind of where, how it started. In, I guess it would have been, most of it would have been done in eighteen, but her report was presented in January twenty nineteen, Willden Performance Engineering. They have a review of this building. They looked at the envelope, which essentially the walls, the windows, the roof, what keeps the inside in and the outside out. The envelope is, you probably know envelope fancy term. The HVAC system, lighting, electrical plumbing, and the interior finishes, so you know, making it function correctly, making it look nice, but not the actual layout of the building, so our offices would look the same, the gym would still be there, none of that would change. They were looking at about two and a half million dollars to get everything up to date in twenty nineteen money, so add a million dollars to that now. So step one, this is kind of a multi-layered project, we're getting a solar requesting for a solar panel slash diesel generator microgrid system. But the real reason is we're trying to get a roof for the city hall. So the new, the, the microgrid will justify getting the new roof will be covered by a FEMA grant if we are approved for it. We submitted it last year, we won't know if we actually get it until June, at least June of this year, maybe December at the latest. ODO, Oregon Department of Energy, has opened their grant application to cover the microgrid install side of it. Deadline is April fifteen. One of their stipulations is an actual, some kind of letter or approval from council saying, yes, we approve city staff to apply for us. So two-part project for the roof, which we may not get, and ODO for the solar grid, which we may not get either. But the bigger picture, I guess, is we still don't know what the future of this building is. And I wanna ask council is, do you wanna put any of staff's effort and or money into this building? If possibly, we're not gonna be here in five years. Again, a lot of unknown variables there, but I wanna throw that out there, at a minimum, we could look at, we could throw the application or do the application, submit it, maybe we get to our planning session in three months, or whenever it happens to happen. Go, and we decide, no, I think we, we'll live in this building for a few years and we'll go for a new one, or maybe we decide, but we still have the option if we end up in this building. A lot, a lot going on there.
So it sounds like we have to, for the solar, we have to say it by April fifteen?
Uh, no, February, it's April, sorry, February.
February fifteen, so we have to say, but we know, we won't know if we get a grant for the roof.
At least June, and we probably won't hear from ODO until probably September, give or take.
And is that grant based on two thousand and nineteen?
Correct.
So.
Well, so I, I need to rerun the numbers, we're working on the KED, we need to get an updated quote from the solar installer, so it will be, it will be current prices.
If we, if we apply for the grant by February fifteen, it's gonna take a while to get it.
Yes.
So what if we get it, and then in June we find out we don't get the grant for the roof, because we can't install the solar panels on a bad roof, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so at that point, could we say, hey, we didn't get the roof or the grant for the roof? We, because we can't put solar on a bad roof, right?
So we, we could either return it, or graciously ask ODO to redirect the funds to some other project. How likely it is, I don't know, it is a resiliency update grant is the whole point of it.
I, would there be any cost beyond the grant funds for either the roof or the solar? Is it a hundred percent?
Oh, it's a hundred percent, yes, I believe it's a hundred percent covered between FEMA and ODO.
And is this building otherwise condemned or not?
So it is not, the worry is it's not seismically fit, so cascade event happens, building's probably gonna fall over.
And what are codes on non-seismic, let's say we do city hall, and we've got a new roof and new solar, and our planning commission has come up with thoughts that we have a fabulous rec center here. Could that occur, or would it need to be seismically upgraded?
And either way, the building needs seismically fit.
So no matter if we stay, someday we have to do it, or if we sold?
I don't know if it has to be, but it needs it, I guess is.
Okay.
And then on your report, you did say that the roof could not support a solar system. You're just talking because of the fact that the commission's in currently, not talking structurally, the building could support solar on it, it just needs a new roof to put on, that's all it was.
Yeah. If you notice when you walk down the hallway here, there's a garbage can, that catches the water.
And that's gonna create mold.
Oh, I'm sure there's mold all over this building. If you look, if you, if you look really close at this building, it's got a lot of issues.
Well, I, we're here, I don't think we're gonna move anytime soon.
No, even if we got the funding started right now, I mean, we're not gonna new city hall for probably these five years.
Two, two years ago when we discussed this, it was gonna cost seven million dollars to replace this building, two million dollars to upgrade it. I'm sure in those two years, those prices have gone way up.
I am one that thinks, if we can get a new roof and solar panels for free, I, unless the staff time and or enlisting some planning commission help time is a burden, which it could be, and you would let us know it was a burden, I, I am certainly for replacing the roof and getting solar panels in a building that we're still in, and we still do have food bank here, and we still do some event here. Number one.
Another reason, you know, reprove this building from something.
Right, and it would make it more, should add value, should we end up selling it some, someday? Is this a historical building? I don't know.
Is it officially registered anywhere, but because of its age, it's kind of a de facto historical building by the state?
This building.
But it's not registered.
Engineer Sean?
My question was more where would the city hall be if it was, if it'd be made a new city hall?
Well, I, you know, Kathy and I have talked, there's a couple ideas, we could put it downtown, turn it into visitor center, we could put it next to these guys by the fire hall, turn it into a civic center that city hall happens to be in, food bank would still be there, port offices, move the library in there, I mean, all these different things, again, discussions for our strategic planning session. But I, I don't think anywhere off of we wanna fall, I guess.
And, and Butch is bringing or talked to the Main Street Association from Mopin that did such a building.
Correct.
And, and, and they got some grant funding, isn't that right, Butch, to do that? But that's, again, way down the road, we're gonna be sitting here, Marilyn's gonna be here, Kathy Musley's gonna be there, it might as well have a better roof.
Yeah, I'm not pushing for either way, I just wanna give all you guys all the different options and what's going on.
So if we go for these grants, and then let's just say, three or four years from now, we vacate, we build something else, something happens. So is there anything that we would be violating in those?
I, so Jackie, who works for the Columbia Economic Development District, is helping us put this application together, she doesn't think there'd be any issues if we haven't left in three years, but she's double checking.
And that would be the question.
Yeah, so like the, the electrical system update from the substation, according to the E D A, it has a lifetime of twenty years, so we could not abandon it within the next twenty years. Which, of course, not gonna do, but that's kind of a similar situation.
But if we renovated this place, we wouldn't have to necessarily sell it, it would still be part of a city building.
Correct, yeah.
So if it's city-owned, it would probably fall under that like, it wouldn't violate any terms, because it's still the city building.
Correct.
So it could be park and rec, could be, yeah.
The only thing I can see is a lot of this dates back to the Eagle Creek Fire. And if something does happen, this building and Public Works and the Electrical Utility Office downstairs will have power for at least two or three weeks between the solar panel and the diesel generator.
So that this becomes a generator safe space for people?
Correct.
Like it could be a warming center?
Yes, yeah.
Could be. That's right.
On a side note, I had last week, somebody, I'm on the River County Energy Council also. And they sent me an application to be on the community renewable energy and resilience projects grant board. So if, that's to set it all be on review board for this.
Well, so you would have to step down for voting?
No, no, for this, for the frame projects from city hall I went.
Okay. Well, I move that we accept the proposal to apply for both grants if, can we put in, if we find from our consultant that it does not violate any change, or do we need to even add that?
I'd say you're kind of putting your cart before the horse, because, you know, I don't think we got, just because we're you know, we're given the grant, doesn't mean we have to accept it.
Yeah, we might say that later, I say, like, leave our options open, you know.
May I strike that and begin, I move that we approve the application for the Oregon DOE grant for solar panel microgrid, do we need to move for the FEMA grant?
No, that's already been signed.
Okay, that's okay.
This is just a consensus, doesn't need.
Yeah, I mean, you can vote if you want, this is a consensus, I have a draft letter for the mayor to sign, saying that council is good to move forward. But you can definitely vote if you want.
Is consensus mean one hundred percent, or do you still get a majority?
Just a majority.
Okay.
Unless one of you is.
Is there any would not for it?
Yeah.
Alright.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Here to Boris, citizens to share a variety of perspectives on issues facing our community. Any on Zoom?
Olga, Jeremiah, Clayton. Thank you.
Of course, city committees?
I know committees here tonight to report, I have mentioned to most of them that you council would like, start meeting with them. So again, it looks like we need double checking ordinance to make sure we're following the procedures correctly. I did meet with our contracted staff with the Tourism and Beautification Committee. Her contract is up at the end of June, very, so we will need to look at doing an R F P for renewing that service. Just wanna bring it to you, I'll all work with them.
At that time, will we open it up to other candidates, or what will we?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So yeah, I'll, I'll draft it, I'll give, present to you guys to, to approve, and then we'll throw it out there.
Fire G M S. Chief Logan.
So your department's, your staff report. Since there's so many new people, just let me take a quick second to introduce myself. I'm John Holden, fire chief. Cast control fire EMS, I've been here since July two thousand and nineteen, prior to that, I was a less acquired river for seventeen years. So I just wanted to do a review of twenty twenty, talk about our ongoing ambulance project. So in twenty twenty, we had four hundred and twenty-nine calls for service. In the last three years, we've averaged anywhere between four hundred and four hundred and fifty calls for service. Nearly eighty percent of our calls are medical, of those eighty percent medical, I would say sixty-five percent of them are freeway incidents. Spent a lot of time on freeway. For the new council members, we cover the freeway from Macho's thirty-one, which is Motlville Falls, all the way to the end of State Park, which is Macho's fifty-six. We do have a contract with Motlville County EMS to provide service from Macho's thirty-one to the Motlville County line. They give us a small chunk of money, but we're gonna work on requesting more money from them. Last time I think we got an increase was in twenty ten, maybe, twenty twelve? So cost of services have gone up since then, so we're gonna talk to them about that. Our new ambulance update, again, review for the folks that were on the last council. We got a bunch of money for American Rescue Act. And we, we ordered a brand new ambulance that was scheduled to be here. Used it there within a year. And COVID happened, they couldn't get a chassis. My paramedics went to a class, education class, and was talking to the instructor about it. Then instructor linked us up with another agency that had one for sale, and so we bought a twenty seventeen rig with only fourteen thousand miles on it for a hundred thousand dollars less than what we're paying for a new one. Which is, I mean, this one's still basically brand new. So with the extra hundred thousand, we've spent on upgrading our equipment, so new heart monitors, new stretcher, a load system for the ambulance. A bunch of other equipment that just needed to be updated. So we have the ring, we picked it up in November. They recently got all of our logos and stripings put on to it, it looks pretty sharp. We're still waiting on Striker, which is the manufacturer of our stretcher or load system, to ship us the stuff. Their last estimate that would be here in February, and then we're waiting on radios from Day Wireless. Last I chatted with them, they still weren't quite sure when those were gonna be here, the attendance for their radios have shipped, so they're in Portland at Day Wireless. But our, our sales guy said that he put in a request to expedite our radio order. So we can get them sooner and get this rig in service soon. Our other two ambulances are twenty-plus years old and are slowly costing us a great deal of money. New ambulance. I just asked our sales guy the other day about, we were ordering that ambulance today, the semi identical one, it's already gone up a hundred thousand dollars, so we ordered it for two hundred and thirty-six thousand, if we were ordered today, it would be two hundred and thirty to two forty, or three hundred thousand to three forty-five. And there's still a two-year out window to get through delivery of that at this time. Towards the end of twenty twenty-two, we had one of our paramedics, who was my first hire, leave to take a job closer to home, he lives in Aragon. So he took a position closer to home. We put out a job, a hiring announcement, luckily, one of our volunteers is a paramedic and she wanted to come work for us. She was our only applicant, she lives in town. Jordan and I are working on how we can make it more attractive. If one of the other paramedics decides to move on, but so far, the three paramedics that we have working for us are very educated, very dedicated, and very talented. And I wanna do everything in my power to keep. And I want to do everything in my power to keep them here. It's pretty amazing the amount of years of service that they have in our field and the knowledge base that they bring to our city that we, we should keep them, do then again, to keep them. This month through today, we've had twenty-nine calls, five of them have been in Molina County, and we've responded to Skamania County once. Couple of new things that you may see my staff with. If you have the unfortunate to call my own, our iPads. The two iPads on the ambulances were a grant from O H A, for an health authority. And then we have three more that we got from T-Mobile, we signed up for service to get our data plan. Two of them right now don't have data plans, and this next budget, I'm gonna budget for those to be in there. But we can do all of our charting on these. I can go do building inspections on these. I've created a Google Drive that I have live access to the burn permits that we have out. We can track complaints and move forward with those. We keep our run number sheet in that Google Drive as well, where we detail what the call was in addition to our reporting that we have to do for the state. But it allows me to really track where we're responding and how we're responding. Whether we're going to Molina County, Skamania County, up to Hood River. Some of you have been around a while. We used to rely on Skamania County a lot. Last year, we called them three times. We responded to them over twenty times. So we have flipped the, we have flipped the deal. Currently, we have four career staff, three paramedics and myself, and about sixteen volunteers. Any questions for me?
Yes, Pete, so the new ambulance that you've got, it's not quite ready to go into service yet, and it's replacing one of the older ones?
Yes, at one point in time, so we had two, oh, we had a red one and a white one. I was dead set that the red one was gonna go away. So I didn't like that one, when it was saved at River, it has some issues. But as of late, our white one has a weird electrical issue that it won't charge. Six months ago, we replaced the alternators on it. I had a mechanic come in and do a load study. And the emergency lights are all halogen, they're all old rotators, they draw about eighty amps. So I think, well, that's eight thousand dollars, just the light bars. That ambulance isn't worth eight thousand dollars. So.
Light bars would be worth more than the ambulance.
Yeah, the light bars would be worth more than the ambulance at this point. So I'm kind of leaning towards replacing the white one now and having to get a graphics company out to change one let, one number on the red one that we're gonna keep from a two to a one. Unless we, I find a smoking gun on the white one soon, I think that's the route we're gonna go, is replace the white one.
I was wondering if there's any equipment you can take off of your retired ambulance to get your new one in service?
Most of the, the equipment that we can take off, we will.
Radios aren't useful.
Well, the radios that are in, the current, the red one that we're gonna replace are so old that in every kind of, we've gone to having radio identifiers on our radios, so every time I key a mic, it just tells our dispatch who it is. Those radios aren't supported anymore, so that can't happen. And even if it could, that radio is so old that the technology's not there.
John, I want to say thank you for all that you have done and saving money and looking here and getting great paramedics to stay, even with our limited budget. And if you know, my husband is a volunteer, so I feel like I see John running down. You have been the urgent care sometimes in this town. And as we plan to get health services to reduce your load, and I know you don't always have the police officer's support on many calls where it would be important to have them there. And just, I want to thank you, I mean, I'm so proud of, of what you're doing here. And on that note, I'm putting this out to our committee members. If you are good at grant writing, if you are good at, if you have connections with Hood River County, Molina County, and fire N E M S, this is part of the, what is the commission for you to do is to improve the planning of health and safety of our community. So I'm hoping, John, and you, I know you're talking to Jordan, kind of, rowing things, and if you said, I would like help with some grant writing, or, you know, maybe that's something we can help find for you.
Yeah. I think our next big grant is an A F G grant, Assistance to Firefighters grant. It just opened for this year, but with this new ambulance project, I just have so much going on and so many numbers holding across my desk, that this isn't the right time. So next year, we'll try to go after that. There is a match in that, it's usually a ten percent match. But I'm leaning towards new portable radios. Because our current portable radios aren't supported by what we're rolling more, so if one breaks, it becomes a paperweight, and we have to spend three thousand dollars on a radio. Started downloading different brands of radios and talking to other fire chiefs in the county, because they're running into the same problem, that radios are extremely expensive, and they all go out of date at some point in time. So we've been looking at different brands, different suppliers of those radios to make the most bang for our buck.
Are there lease options for radios, just being that they are technology and they just seem like they're good outdated so quickly?
Not, not really on the public safety side of the house. Businesses that are, are losing those options to lease and be able to flash your own radios on the public safety side. We have so many different radio channels that are in our radios. We have eight banks of sixteen channels in our radios. It's like a hundred and forty-four channels, if my math's correct, that we have access to. Some of those channels on each bank are the same, but in our radios, we have all our fire stuff, we have Wildland fire stuff, so we talk to the feds, we talk to the state. We have police, EMS stuff that we can talk to the state on, all the hospitals are in there. There's a bunch of things in there. So leasing the radios, they don't really do that on the public safety side. They're all narrow-banded and they have a bunch of P twenty-five, they have a bunch of stuff that.
And one last thing, if you're dreaming and visioning of what, and you're not even sure if the city can help, if you will, let us know, this is what I wish, how you could help us. Because we're so glad that you're here, and we're not calling Skamania to, to help us. So as we think about this, you know, month, and we're gonna have our plan meeting, you know, if, if there are some visions where you think we can be helpful, or like, yay, please put urgent care next to my station. So I don't have to be urgent care, please put a, you know.
I do invite everybody to come down and do tour the fire station, I can show you apparatus and and walk you through all of our stuff and how we do things.
Cool.
I'm gonna introduce your dedicated. She's my dedicated. She was my second hire. Little funny story about Tess in this position, she actually applied for my job. It was very awkward, once I figured that out, I hired her, and then one of our other volunteers applied for my job too. And we all pretty worked together pretty well. But Tessie is fantastic. Are you a paramedic too, Tess?
Yes.
Oh, all of our paramedics are females in Cascade Box, with the exception of two volunteers that are men. But all of our career staff, other than the, our people, first, Tess, Miranda, and Julie. Julie, I can never remember Julie. Miranda's a volunteer, lives here in town and was a volunteer.
And the, so do you have another, I guess, you don't really have like a, a max number of volunteers you can take off that you can get, probably said. But it seems like you just said you've built a, a paid position with one of your volunteers, so you probably need more volunteers.
So the, the gentleman that left, Paul, he's fantastic. And he has kind of moved to a volunteer spot and is willing to cover shifts, so if Tessie tells me tomorrow that she's taking vacation on this day, I can call Paul, and be like, hey, Paul, we have an opening, keep them covered.
You heard it, Tessie.
Yeah. And he's willing to come in and cover that, that ALS shift for us, I mean, we don't lose that coverage. We don't have, we don't have a deep bench.
All the more reason why representation's so important.
One of the career staff thinks that they are, they don't really have a bench to call in additional players, but we have a few.
Well, I gotta hand it to you and your whole staff, and when you're, when you and your staff took care of my grandson, meant the world to me, everyone was so calm, I, however, was not, but but your professionalism and, and everything, it was just, your whole team was just really, really appreciated.
So this more on the new people, anytime I raise up them to council, it's gonna have a big fella up here. Maybe my business is cheap. I mean, our turnouts that we wear are about thirty-five hundred dollars a set, and that's just for the pants and the jacket. Doesn't take account the hundred and fifteen dollar pair of gloves, three hundred dollar pair of boots, three hundred dollar helmet. And that's just so we can respond, though loaner vehicles, they're expensive.
And to the new people, in the short amount of time I've known John Logan, he has looked at every deal possible to get the best thing. He's never coming in asking for the Mercedes-Benz version of anything. But he's looking for quality for the people that are putting their life on the line, so. Thank you, John.
So what do you guys do for the auto and maintenance for your vehicles? Do you take them somewhere for service, or do someone come here?
Somebody comes here for our yearly service. So our two medics get serviced every year. Our first out fire engine gets a little change every year. And then our Wildland engine and our second out engine, they alternate each year, because they just don't put the miles and the wear and tear on them. So there isn't really a need to spend four thousand dollars on service every year for them, if they only have like forty, fifty miles on them. So we have a company come in, I'm currently trying to research a new company, not at the, current company is doing a terrible job. They're just based in Washington, so they have to charge us sales tax.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Because sales tax is based on where the service is provided, not where they're based at.
That's what they said, they have to start charging the sales tax in the past, they haven't. So we're spending about nine hundred dollars in just tax, getting our engines serviced.
I mean, just, I would just, I don't know, I mean, like, we're looking at switching providers, because I don't think that's right. I mean, I just felt for one of my businesses, I have nine different sales taxes that we have to charge to getting our, providing that service, but if you buy something from Home Depot and you have it delivered to Oregon, you don't pay more, even if you buy it from a Washington store. That just seems strange to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't know.
But then we have a mechanic in Parkdale and one in Hood River that are on call if we need something fast. That's not our yearly service.
You catch tire for your truck?
Yes, yeah. You bought tires for your car, it was expensive. Brought two tires for three thousand dollars. Yeah. But they needed to be replaced, and something that I'm gonna budget for is to start replacing those. The steer tires are very important, if one of those blows and we're driving seventy miles an hour on the freeway, we can kill somebody pretty quickly.
Yeah, I know. And then your ambulances, are any, is anything all wheel drive, or they're all?
They're four-wheel drive.
They're, they're.
Four-wheel drive. The white one is two-wheel drive. So.
We can get around.
We can get around, unfortunately, you just put your steering tires on the white one, but.
So I guess that's automatic and they're four-wheel drive. Then the fire engine is?
Chained.
Chained.
Yep.
So you guys just throw chains out when you see there's weather coming, or?
Usually, as soon as the forecast happens and we start to see accumulation of snow, usually about an inch will go to the engines up. And usually they won't come off until we're pretty sure that the roads are gonna be good for a while. It's easier to, the drop chains than it is to put them on and, or. As Pete knows, it's easier to take them off and put them on.
Thanks, it, it was just questions I had to your top, appreciate it. But feel free to stop by the fire station if you're, and we.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do have Sheldon Price, our maintenance superintendent, or supervisor, scheduled for the next meeting on the thirteenth. And then Derek Turkington, our ground, ground man, this is title, in our electric department on February twenty-seventh.
All right, next, strategic plan update.
Okay, so I did research into the plan options that we discussed at the last council meeting. It's kind of broken down into process, cost, and timeline. Everybody I talked to kind of agreed, you know, with our thought of doing a town hall, putting a survey out there, using the consultant, whoever it is, to kind of compile it together, doing a workshop with council, and then creating a strategic plan. And that timeline would be about three months from start to finish, give or take a little bit. The cost for the consultants, I've only gotten actual one official quote, and that was fifteen thousand dollars. The other one I talked to said a minimum of twenty thousand, but they did not provide an official quote. I talked with the director of the I P R E program at University of Oregon. We can have a summer internship here, so it would kind of delay our process, but we would have an intern here onsite for three months, helping us put this together for a cost of five to ten thousand. So I, I mean, that, those are kind of the price ranges we're looking at. One of the benefits of doing University of Oregon is this one government agency doing a direct hire of another. We don't have to go through the R F P process and all of that, so we can just negotiate with them. But it, it sounds like the, the route to go, unlike we discussed, town hall, survey, combination, maybe one town hall, maybe multiple, depending on, on timelines. Have the consultant compile that kind of digestible information for council and staff to go over and then whittle it down into a community vision or strategic plan. I, I can get official quotes with scopes of work if you guys like, to review. We, so we don't have to do any bids or an actual R F P until we get up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, and we're not gonna spend that much. So I can just get actual quotes with scopes of work.
Are we, is this something that we might vote on tonight?
No, 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 I, I can present it, see if I can get anything for next meeting or first one in, or second one in February, yeah.
Yeah, I will, I was gonna say, I would have a question, if we go with, oh, the criteria for the interns, like, what level are they and?
So they don't be graduate students, and they would also go work with their advisors and their faculty. So we, we kind of get the whole package with them as well. Wouldn't, it wouldn't be a grad student on the first time out, so. It might be the first time out, but they have, they have support with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I've worked with, um, planning interns in Welch's for the village's amount of Strategic Planning Committee, which was, I believe Welch's is one hundred people more population than we are, or one to less, I forget. And we had really great, fabulous planning, documents, and meetings, and phone corps boards for the community to look at. Worked again with planning interns in the city of Milwaukee, and again, I felt like the, their wholeheartedness dedicated to that agency there with, was huge and fabulous, so. That, and I, again, saving ten to fifteen thousand dollars that might otherwise go to the fire department or somewhere else, is all right.
Yeah, I will add, none of this is actually currently in effect, so, wait, I forgot that part, I'll take.
And did you have any luck with the League of Oregon Cities?
Last time I talked to them, they were short, so short staffed. Uh, last time I talked to them, they were short, so short staffed, they couldn't get to us. Yeah, and I, what I can follow has been a little bit.
Okay.
I'd be curious to hear what they had to say as far as resources they might have provided.
The last time I, I looked, reached out to them, they essentially sent me the listserv email of, you know, city managers will email each other and say, hey, who, who uses? And they just sent me that, like, well, we reach out to them, here's the list we've gotten in the past. They, they're so backed up, but that's been.
I'd be curious, I didn't talk to some other people that, it's great that you've been through this process before, because you know, watching Welch's for, yeah, I think that we're gonna be getting some more information from other people that have done this recently, with abuse for this. I was first looking at this and like, oh, I don't know if we wanna hire an intern, but I, I'm curious, what you had to say is.
Their graduates could be hired by a company at the time that they're finishing their internship for us. So they are, you know, they're, and they're, the good thing about them, new graduates, they know current codes and they know current studies. Not that anybody wouldn't. And again, I.
They're probably confident and be able to use.
Thinking that a planning commission might wanna think about this as well, because obviously they would be working with them.
I think that's a great good point, that's something that necessarily need to be, get their input, we're making that too.
I, I did reach out to Mopin, they.
Independence or Mopin?
Mopin.
Okay.
They do, they did a twenty-year, where do they want Mopin in twenty twenty-five, back in the early two thousands? And they, they met every single goal, so they're restarting their twenty-year vision. They used a company, oh, I said Four Seasons, but I know that's wrong. They only spent four thousand dollars, it was really cheap. They came in, orchestrated the town hall and helped them organize it. But I talked to the city manager, said it was okay, their service was alright, they felt they probably could have done it themselves. But it's still gonna have that third perspective, somebody fresh looking at it to at least help facilitate the video. Well, there, there are some cheaper options.
Any luck with Independence?
I haven't researched yet, no, no.
Maybe we can see how they did their services. I had sent Jordan an example of the town of Independence and how they took, got, gathered their information.
That's the end of the interesting, they did a whole like survey and who did the survey and where they were standing in the city when they did the survey.
It was, it detailed, so, but I don't know if they hired that or.
Yeah, I didn't tell any of all of them.
And Stephen, the questions and how you phrase those questions is really important.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, right. The survey question, the, the survey that we've used last two years at the community picnic, that's from Independence. I just switched the wording to make it applicable to Cascade Locks, so.
Now, was the survey made at a public meeting?
The results from that?
No, the survey, the public meeting.
They did a public meeting.
No, to the community picnic was a public meeting.
We talking about our community picnic?
That's what LLC said.
Well.
And that ethics, it was a public meeting.
What makes up for the public meeting, but?
The survey, just gathering input, reflecting, there was four people there. Four council members there. And you were gathering information, made it a public, public meeting.
From my understanding with LLC, because I called and checked on that, it wasn't a public meeting, from my understanding. But anyway, I don't wanna get down the rabbit hole with this.
It's a funny thing you're doing, you're the city.
Yeah, so it didn't, and they said cities number one pay for things all the time. You know, they, uh, run the survey and the survey wasn't, like, it was, it wasn't directed from one person. So it was a joint effort between, um, city and port with both agreements. And there was copies of the survey given to council to say, hey, this is, here's the questions, looking for input. Did you like them, did you not?
We didn't get any copies of any questions this year, did this last year?
And they were saying they were the same questions. So, and that was noted in a meeting that they were gonna be the same questions, so.
But you're saying there's a quorum that was at the.
Yeah, there was a quorum in gathering information.
We were the four people there.
I mean, I know I was there.
We were, when we were in that informational meeting in the pavilion, and I made the hypothetical question, she said, yes, that was a public meeting.
But I don't think you had a quorum at all.
I'm, I'm looking forward to the future and that we are gonna make plans to do it according to what we all vote on.
Hang on, wait a minute, let's.
And, um, and this is again where I'm, I'm going to mention our committees. Planning committee might be able to do some of these things that probably take it off the elected officials' plate. Um, and/or the agency or the intern that we hire. So, um, this town has, is small and there's a lot to do and everybody's probably doing too much. And it's exciting that we can be clear about, you know, oh, we need this, probably best place to do this is planning commission. Get that commission on board with that.
It's a good idea. And being such a small town, the odds of four of us and being in one spot are pretty great. So I like the idea of that planning.
And as long, I know, um, because I wanted to make sure I'm doing everything right and I speak to Oregon Ethics Commission and LLC. Of course, we're gonna be at the same restaurant at the same time for the same event, but we're not talking about business. You know, that's right, something that we're gonna.
But I do think it's important, we have to be careful about the perception that we're discussing city business. You know, I think that is something that is important. And I definitely think that to your point, we are looking for, but I think it's worthy of making sure that we're addressing which is concerns and that we wanna make sure that we're doing things on the up and up and being transparent, not trying to hold meetings and.
Right.
Correct.
You know, that they're married, so I think we're all on agreement on that.
Mm-hmm, yes. Okay.
Would you like me to get official quotes from consultants as well as UVO to, to review? I know UVO is a little bit more, um, in terms of like hours of work, it's not, plus it'd help them get rooms and stuff. So because it's intern, there's a little more on R and helping them than it is with consultant, just getting a hotel room, so. But I, I can bring official quotes to the, in next meeting or the one after, once I get them all ready with the guy.
Is there a possibility that the port might fund you going jointly and there's some work at the point the port needs? Because I know Condon used UVO for some landscaping, uh, studies. And also, I guess, the county, it's been together and they went in jointly and helped the port.
Great idea, which to talk to the board about where we.
Well, we have, we have Olga on.
Jeremiah.
Olga and Jeremiah.
Olga, would the Port Commission be willing to do a, a joint, um, such a community vision, where they want the city and the port in twenty years?
Uh, that's a great question for the commission, I'll certainly take it there. I think, um, I think from staff's perspective, would certainly support something like that. Were you thinking of a specific structure? Because the port is engaged in a very formal, uh, strategic business plan, uh, process at the moment. Uh, we are certainly expecting that the city as a partner participates in that process regardless of, of whether or not this is a joint vision or this is a port vision that's informed by the city and the city's goals. Uh, so certainly collaboration is at the top of that list for priorities for that plan. Um, however, if you were thinking of something that is more coordinated, I think there is, um, certainly room for that. If, if the council agrees to something like that, I'm happy to take it to the commission and at the very least align the two so that they can, uh, be done in tandem.
Olga, do you use a consultant now with your strategic planning?
We do, we have engaged Moss Adams for strategic business plan. Our strategic business, our strategic business plan will cost upwards of sixty-five thousand dollars as well, so it's gonna be fairly involved. It's going to look at the demographics, it's going to look at the environmental, uh, changes that have occurred since our last strategic, strategic business plan, which was in twenty sixteen, fifteen, in twenty fifteen. So, um, there is certainly lots of information economically that's changed. Um, the, the layout of the opportunities has changed for the port. This is one of our, um, every ten years, so to say, this is actually closer to seven years, but, um, this is, this is once in a ten-year kind of a visioning opportunity. The port also engages in a yearly revision of that plan. So we do internal visioning based on what we've set out for the next ten years and re-revise it, um, to make more current for the opportunities that are currently present and, um, challenges that present themselves all the time. So we certainly do a, a yearly revision, but this is, this is our big one.
Olga, with, with the port staff, you and Jeremiah now, see any conflict of interest or difficulty if Jordan were to contact that firm and see if some of what the data they're receiving, if we also worked with them? Because it sounds like they might be gathering some economic development information that would be useful to us, environmental information. Do you see any negative of us investigating whether or not they might add to their contract and work for us to?
Certainly not, I think even the data that they, that, that the consulting firm will put together for us is going to be public records. So the city will most certainly have access to that, um, potentially even throughout the process, um, as much as we can share, as much as it's ready to be shared and, and, and has enough space for the council to discuss between, be, before decisions are made. But most definitely in its final format, all the data is public data of, that the port, um, that the port collects and puts together. So I don't think so, I think if Moss Adams came on board and was in tandem, also completing the city council's visioning, I just think it could strengthen the vision for both of us, the city and the port, to move, um, to move forward with, rather than in any way weakened or conflicted.
Thank you. And one last question, do you plan on doing town halls and, um, surveys?
There's certainly public engagement component to the strategic business plan, I don't yet know what it looks like. We, we're in very early stages of, uh, publishing a timeline or even establishing a timeline and establishing some of the activities and the tasks that need to be done. Uh, public engagement certainly is a piece of the scope of work for consultants, so we know that will happen.
Thank you. Can I ask, when you plan on doing this? Would you say?
Yeah, we, we have, uh, as of, I want to say the nineteenth, signed the agreement, we're waiting for the executed copy of it. Uh, so we're, we're right there, we've had a, a number of preliminary conversations with the consultants. So as soon as the agreement is actually executed, it's, it's full-on, um, uh, execution of the scope of work. And the scope of work includes, uh, tell us what the demographics are like, tell us what the economy is like, tell us what the opportunities are like. But also have a conversation with the commission and have a conversation with the community about where are those external opportunities and challenges that are presented by those, uh, data that we file, that, that the consultants have, uh, compiled.
Wow, I love this information you're getting and I hope Jordan will contact Moss Adams and see what extra cost it might be to add some city elements that they may not have been considering before. Does that seem appropriate?
Yeah, good job, yeah. Um, I will gotta save this for my report since we're talking with you guys. Olga, you had emailed about doing a joint session with, um, the council, even most of them are new, um, and really just kind of a, there, I guess, meet and greet what you guys are doing, keep the city up to date. Um, and probably delve into some of these conversations as well. So council, um, Olga emailed me, uh, proposing February twenty-third for a joint work session. Olga, do you have a time frame in mind, I'm assuming evening?
Yeah, either six or seven, six is typical for the commission, seven is typical for the council, whatever we can work out, sounds great to me. I would suggest that the strategic business plan or strategic vision or shared vision or whatever collaboration that we can, um, agree on, uh, makes it on that agenda. And we, uh, discuss that further as well. Uh, we probably will be somewhat on our way with our formalized, uh, plan for how that will happen by then and potentially start, start some of the data collection. So it would be a, a great time to, for the, for the council and for the commission to discuss how that could, how that could roll out and benefit both entities. Meanwhile, Jordan and I will of course do all the preliminary work and try to put together the timelines and the suggested activities and those kinds of things.
Six P M on Thursday, February twenty-third here?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be in this room. I'm assuming Olga would be here.
I think we'd like that.
Talk about a date for the, our planning day to get together. For the, those of you who are new, for the last two years, uh, Butch and I have served, um, second meeting of the year, there was one short meeting and then there was about ten minutes of, well, what do you wanna see? What, what's important to you or what would you see? And so we're looking at doing something a little bit more in depth. Um, I think everyone has different ideas and, and it's a, a lot to take care of, you know, in a year. But I think as a group, we could come up with a plan, um, and, and how are we gonna accomplish that? And I really wanna hear from each and every one of you, like, what's important, kind of keep that in your mind and then we can get it on the schedule and, and talk about it. And it could be something, you know, from any ordinances or whatever, so just streamline things a little bit too and clear up. Really drill down, go through the ordinances that we have, make sure there's a full understanding of those. And if there's one down there, we can ask a question about it. Can't do voting in planning, but we can certainly talk about it.
Are we suggesting that we have a planned date separate from city council meeting? That we've come up with a date and how many hours do you propose?
So it'd like to probably be an all-day thing, so probably for most individuals that were maybe Saturday, a Saturday. So we'll just need to, does that sound?
Yeah.
A Saturday?
Now, this would be separate from ending with the council, correct?
Yeah.
Is it, would it be valuable to do this before we had the joint meeting with the port or that doesn't matter? Because we're talking about city council priorities.
Talking about city council priorities. Does anybody wanna, everyone look at your calendars and we can maybe come up with a date. I know I am old-fashioned and have an actual planner on my desk, so, I don't have it on my phone. But maybe if we could come up with those two possible dates and then do a poll and those ones.
Yeah, you said we could maybe do that, just via email?
Oh, yeah, yeah, emailing. Yeah.
Can you do that?
So email Jordan two possible Saturdays that would work.
Perfect.
And you know, you ever sent out an email, everybody just say respond, but two days a year.
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully sooner than later, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Jordan needs time to organize all that and where we're gonna have it. Alright. To be administrative better for the board.
I'm not a super. I'm not a super long one today. The saga of the Dry Creek pump continues. We were told the cover for it would be shipped last week. Now we're being told that we ship this week. So when it gets here, it's here. For the new folks, this is a couple of houses up at the end of Dry Creek Road where the water pressure doesn't allow them to run more than one appliance at a time. You can't shower and water your lawn or shower and wash your dishes flush. So we put an extra booster pump there. This has been a year-long saga. The last step is a cover to keep it protected from the weather. Supposed to be here like two months ago. We ended up going with a different company to provide the cover. Now they told us a couple of times, oh, it'll be delivered this week, it'll be delivered this week, so. So it's May, just need to be shipped.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
We're so close.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can get this thing operational, the cover, or me?
Um, it's a good question. I don't know. I haven't asked.
Can we make our own cover?
Yeah, tar and supply wood, we could probably.
So they did do a temporary one just to protect it for the winter, so then there's something covering it. But it's it's a, if you've seen the new one they did out of the pump stations, I mean, it's a stainless steel box. It'll it'll protect that thing. It's got a lock, it's got doors, and I mean, it protects it. So whether it's operational or not, I don't know. I have to ask.
Yeah, I wonder if there's any way we can get this thing turned on and operational, like, so that the power. And how long is it going to take them to get it here once it ships? Do you know that?
I think it's coming from Illinois, maybe. It's probably me.
So it should have part ship.
This week is what they told me, so, but I almost heard about it a couple of times.
I'd like to know, because it could be at our next city council meeting if I didn't have it there's.
Exactly, yeah.
So it'd be nice to know there's an alternative, like, what can we do to get this thing operational? Do we have any recourse on weight of delivery?
I don't believe so.
How much is this cover?
It was like nine thousand five hundred.
It's a light bar.
Just under the threshold for having to do quotes.
I'll confirm that. Shipping items, especially construction or anything that would do with engineering, is extremely volatile. But there are options for expedition if we're willing to pay. An option too. Depends on how dire it is. I don't know yet. Who wants to drive me home, am I?
It's probably not even built yet, that's the problem. Companies like this think have it like mostly done, but it's not all the way done. And they're like, oh, yeah, we'll get it done this week. Doesn't happen.
Yeah, that was the problem with the original companies. They told that we we ordered it, six months went by, they said they'd have it shipped, they hadn't even started building it. So we went to get it. I have two electrical system updates. Somewhat of some decent progress. I did meet with the asset acquisition folks with B P A. I don't know how much new counselors know, we are, and this has been going on for five years, looking at buying the B P A substation across the highway and then buying, also buying a new substation, putting our extra requiring land and a new substation. The talk started in twenty, probably twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, about actually acquiring it from B P A, and then they fizzled out because there were some funding issues, a delay in the funding. And those talks never got restarted until I reached out to B P A last week. It's going to take them thirty to sixty days to reevaluate the depreciated value of the substation. So hopefully that comes back less money. They sell us the land at what they bought it for when they bought it. So when they bought bought that one acre of land for twelve dollars in nineteen forty-five, that's buying it for twelve dollars. But the substation, when they originally priced it, the great upon price came to two hundred seventy-five thousand for a seventy-five-year-old substation, which to me is just makes no sense. So I actually reached out to Senator Merkley's office to see if there's anything they could do for us to buy a piece of equipment that has no light rod. It's just, it's scrap at this point. So we're waiting on that. I also reached out to the port. That's another thing we need to get done for this is, like I mentioned earlier, it's a twenty-year of life for the program. We need to work with the ports and probably update our I G A with them, our intergovernmental agreement, saying we will work with them for at least the twenty years of this project to provide power for their economics. So that's also in the works. And those are the two biggest things, at least in terms of progress. I did find out that special award conditions for the grant. We have to have the land in hand with the title saying it is ours before they even give us a penny. So we will have to upfront at least a quarter of a million dollars to get it. And then we can actually start the reimbursement process. But the grant itself is also reimbursed based. So we also have to buy the probably roughly six hundred fifty thousand dollar substation and then get reimbursed for it. I have talked to our finance director. We have the money. We have over four million dollars in our account, so we can front the money. Shouldn't be an issue, just wanted to let you know. There's a lot of money to upfront, but we have the funds.
So the question, once we get the new substation that's old, do, what does that look like to retrofit it or replace pieces or?
So that we would buy it, we would hire somebody to fit it, to retrofit, to fit our system, and it would come here ready to 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 go. And we'd have it installed.
And is this this substation whereupon we get more megawatts that we have been talking about?
Correct. So the old B P A station can handle six megawatts. Our current one, what we call the Pyramid Substation, can handle fourteen. We are looking at buying one that can handle anywhere from thirty-five to four. So it'd be quite a big job for the state. B K I, our electrical engineers, did present a first draft of three different options. You know, here's how we could set it up. We could also keep the Pyramid Substation and move it next to the new one as a backup in different price ranges. Derek and I and actually Mark Johnson from the port looked at it. We're going to tweak a few things. And they're going to redraft it and want to bring it to you guys as a council, as just a workshop, a dedicated meeting to meet with B K I to answer any questions we have about this. I'm not sure on the date yet, but I would like to bring that as an option. So it's very slow steps, but we are getting there. We're probably still looking at two, two years from this thing being done.
Two years before we have the added megawatts, which would affect any development.
Best case scenario with B P A and us actually acquiring the land is about five months. They're going to take their time to reevaluate it. And then we got to go through the actual permit permitting processes and do any deeper requirements that may involve disturbing the land. They said best case scenario, five months. I don't know where Gordon had left it and and how this got delayed, but that's for a rat. Need recap. We are actually a part of three different chambers of commerce, the West Columbia Gorge Chamber of Commerce, the Skamania Chamber of Commerce, and Hood River Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure what any of them actually do for us, to be honest. I met with the West Columbia Gorge Chamber, a lot of businesses based out of Gresham and Trentdale. They seem like a great crew. I met the president. They're all volunteer-based. They're having paid staff at the moment. They seemed very excited to have me there and kind of help us. But again, I I'm not sure what the value is.
Jordan, did we pay to be a member?
We do. We had to be a member.
And we paid for twenty-three, Owen?
I think we did. I didn't want to, yeah. So I'm still doing my.
So this again could be something where we request our committees or put it if we've already paid to be there, there may be benefit. I know chambers are quite business oriented.
Yes.
Might be benefit for a representative to go, who wouldn't otherwise afford to pay or choose to pay. One of the businesses in town or somebody in here. I don't know.
That's a really good idea. It's kind of local business actually wanting be a part of the meeting. What you're suggesting is maybe not.
Would they like to be a part of the chamber of commerce?
They're representing themselves, they can't speak on behalf of Cascade Lock, so they are from Cascade Lock, so, you know.
But they could at least go and participate and bring back some information.
And maybe even if it's our committee, they could represent the committee. I don't know. Or if we get the Main Street downtown business.
Right now, there is no business association.
Right.
It's a waste of money.
What would be the way of, oh, we already paid for twenty-three. What would be the way of finding somebody at this moment to go? Just asking and then they checking with, I don't know. Council have to approve that it's our membership? The City of Cascade Lock membership?
It just seems like a waste of money if it was paying the dues but not actually.
That's what I think too. I think there can be some benefit if somebody's excited to be there and asking questions about how do you do this in your town, or how, you know, can we, you know?
It's kind of where the city council, city council, right? It wouldn't be a.
No, I think you said it's mostly businesses?
Yeah, they're mostly businesses. Usually the local cities do this just to support their local businesses. I mean, memberships are usually a couple hundred dollars, not not huge amounts.
But still. How many chambers though?
We're a part of a degree of them, and it's we're just far enough from all of them where it's hard to really like I mean, we might get some people from Troutdale or Gresham to come out here based off their advertising. It's hard to tell. Even though in Skamania, they're the closest one, but that river that's a wide river with the toll booth. It's.
Well, I am I I've been to a Skamania Chamber event here. I think you went to that as well. And we do some gorge combined gorge marketing, you know, Christmas and the gorge.
We know a workout.
Was it? Yeah, remember that? And so I see the value, but not necessarily that the city commissioner needs to go. So again, I'll put it out, but and on that note, I know the port attends some of these things. I'm just going to say this now, Brittany Berg at the Community Action Team meeting mentioned a committee called One Gorge Advocacy Group. And so this idea that the gorge is one board location to advocate for environmental and economic development, history, preservation, Native American rights. And Brittany is going to the state of, in Salem, if you're interested, you can contact Brittany, Brittany Berg, I said, right at the port. In February, and then they're also going to this state capital, Washington. So the reason I'm including that in this conversation is I do kind of think there is value in expanding. We are overwhelmed. This is still a city, but remembering that we're a bigger part of the gorge. And gorge housing, gorge, I know housing is big in this group, the river, the health of the river, the economic development. But I don't know how we find people to be a liaison, one person who's excited. And I would simply suggest the community members we meet maybe and say, if this is something you're interested in, I need to know what is our protocol. What did we pay for exactly?
What's that?
What did we pay for exactly? Chamber membership. Chamber membership. So so that person can go to that meeting. Okay.
Well, we also get advertised in their their website and all that. But we are the only entity from Cascade Locks in in the West Columbia Gorge that I've.
Sometimes in business, you become a part of other organizations that they're you know, this is what we're talking two hundred dollars or not, we're not talking thousands. But sometimes you become part of other businesses because somehow, some way, it's connected. And I know for the company that I work for is a part of that chamber and and the Gresham Chamber. And it's, I can't count how many times somebody's like, oh, my gosh, Cascade Locks. And they will come up here, and I would imagine they've spent more than two hundred dollars in town. So that's kind of the benefit there. It it just, it's kind of like if you're a Quonos member and you go somewhere and there's a Quonos member, there's a little bit of unity there. Well, a lot of Quonos or Lions, any of those, but it's just sometimes like what's Skamania or Hood River County or West Columbia Gorge. I think they're all relatively close to us, and it's not, we're not talking a lot of money. Now, if Lincoln City wanted to be, I'd go, well, that's a little far, then it would be a benefit. But I do know Troutdale does push the gorge a lot. So their businesses push it, even their, what is it, gateway to the gorge. So we do have a little bit of a tie, but I think the question is, you know, who's going, who's attending? And I love you attending, but we're just, I'm concerned that I don't want your plate gets.
Well, it was a seven-thirty coffee meet and greet, and I hit it on the way out to work.
Yeah, okay.
It was. It was like three o'clock on Tuesday afternoon. I'm not going, so.
Right. Well, and or this body and committee members could, we could list the dates and times of these things or send out an email, and we could sign up if we were interested. We already paid. I I really do believe in the idea that of the name of the organization, Brittany is a part of, One Gorge. One gorge advocacy figure. We do advocate for each other. We do market for each other. In our little mini survey of visitors, it said there's not enough advertising for what's going on. And if I saw that Dells did a big piece on seeing Eagles, best place to see the Eagles, we have a lot of Eagles here. We have never marketed our eagle sites. You know, I do see the value in this connection. That's all. So I I think I may have misspoken. I I know what Chamber of Commerce is, but what, why did we, what's our what are you hoping to get out of it? I mean.
I mean, from a business perspective, I feel like it makes sense to, you know, network to the businesses, but the intention is I'm going to help your business, you can help my business. How does this benefit the city?
So that's really what, yeah, and I guess economic development and cross to me sharing what they might not know. Oh, did you know we have this here? Did you know?
So when I met with them.
Do we have any pamphlets in any of these Chamber of Commerce? Because a lot of people go to this Chamber of Commerce, ask where to go, and there's some naked pamphlets.
You're talking like Rad卡?
Well, just pamphlets, let you go, oh, I didn't know that there was a town called Cascade Box. That's only like twenty minutes away from where I'm right now.
We do, or at least we should. I need to double check the list, but we pay our our contracted tourism staff to go out and distribute our our flyers, our brochures.
It would be a great thing for tourism kids.
We do, actually, that's what.
I mean, to go to these meetings, that you brought that up. That'd be a great place for our tourism and education committee member to attend on behalf of the money spent by Cascade Lock, all right? That's what I think.
And when I did meet, he thinks Ed Ed Chen is the president, and he was more than willing to, if we decide to do some kind of downtown business, come out and knock on doors for us. Whether he follows through, I don't know. He sounded more than willing to do it.
Thank you.
But again, I mean, yeah, the the. But again, I mean, yeah, the, the, the city being part of it probably doesn't get much direct benefit, but. If the whole point is to support local businesses. It's, yeah, kind of second theory. Yeah.
Are you, are you asking this body to give you permission not to attend?
Oh, no, no, I'm just letting you know. I attended the meeting. I had these conversations. I don't know where it's leading. I think a lot, a lot of this depends on what happens with our community vision plan.
And if you sent us, if it was easy enough to send when the meetings were. I'm willing to sign up sometimes. I don't know if anybody else is and maybe I'm, I'm personally willing to send. Committee members to see if they're interested, because they may not know they have that option.
Good. Immediately, we gotta figure out how to maximize the membership that we've already paid for. And then we can determine whether or not it's value to continue to.
Right.
Yep.
For 2024. But that would be helpful. That would be a good strategic place.
That's kind of my question. Like we paid for it, but we didn't really have a plan of what we were gonna get out of it.
Well, I think we've just been paying year after year. I, I think it was. A month into me being here, I don't wanna upset the apple cart like list we have been doing. I'll go ahead. Well, we'll do it this year or we'll reevaluate and see what happens.
Yeah, if we could get a calendar events, that would be great. All right.
I don't. We. I thought this was.
Come on.
So Senator Berkeley Town Hall, myself and, and Council President Happy attended. And myself, him and Mark were the only, Mark Johnson from the Portland, the only three people from Cascade Locks there. It's very Hood River oriented, which is, it was in Hood River, so no surprise. But a lot of the problems they have, we're also having, and just smaller scale.
The biggest things that came up with that really. There's a comment that the person from the school district made about the background checks.
Yeah.
Were mandated for new hires or head start. They have to go through this specific background check. Process. It takes two months to get those results back, which is just crazy. I mean, it's just, and so that's making it difficult for them that our head start's been closed for. Year and a half, but then they can't get futures. And so he's like, we know, he gives me a job offer. Contingent on their successful completion of a background check. By the time you get the background check back, they've got a reemployment.
Yep.
So that was really good that that got brought up. The bridge was discussed, both the Hood River Bridge and also the. Bridge of the Gods and then Marina and the plan for potentially being able to expand that, you know, colony to cruises. Anything else that was?
Not, I mean, it was really Hood River heavy. They talked, I can't remember now. You know, healthcare was talked about quite a bit.
Housing.
Housing.
It was interesting to learn, Senator was talking about how. Everybody's heard about these people that are coming in and making cash offers for.
Oh, that's. That's what it was.
And he was talking about legislation that these are investors. These are not people. These are like. Investors that are buying up these properties. They're looking at legislation. He's like, homes are supposed to be owned by people. They're not. These are home truism.
Was it Georgia he mentioned?
I can't remember.
Yeah, I did. There's no Oregon. I think he said it was Georgia. That one in five houses that were bought were through hedge funds, not actual families. Yeah. And he talked about how just a, probably nineteen seventies, two bed, three bedroom, two bed rundown bungalow in the middle of Hood River was 700,000. Just, just a piece of junk with 700,000.
Yeah, same thing with STRs. We have people that do not live here that are. Buying houses and putting up. Short term rentals up.
Yep.
We do have ordinance for how many and.
Yep.
And so if it's, if it's not. Strict enough, then we, if we're not looking, I imagine somebody is counting how many. Yeah. This is based on population.
They cannot be within more than, yeah, 250 feet from each other and 5% of houses. Where we currently stand and, you know, Kathy would probably.
I would like to see us change ours the way that the river has it. And that there can be no FSRs and residential areas.
That might be a good. Thing to talk about at our planning session because I. I'm feeling some. Changes need to be made in that area too. All right, okay.
Yeah, so we met with the power and transmission account executives from BPA. Myself, Mayor Kathy, Councilman Miller was there, Mark Johnson, Jess Groves. And Jeremiah from the port were there. Really helped us all kind of understand how BPA operates, our, our pricing system, tier one, tier two. In the packets, you should have a recap of the meeting from Kevin Harley, our account power executive, as well as. Kind of a handout to get at the meeting. Our pricing system. Is based off a contract from 2010. Or no, yeah, 2010, it's a 20 year contract. And it's, and it's based off what our average high water power usage is in 2010. It was. 2.5 megawatts. We're now at 4.5 and roughly in there. So everything up to 2.5, we pay what's called tier one, which is $35. Per kilowatt hour. I can never remember those. Maybe, yeah, 35, $35 per. Megawatt. And then, and then over that. Yeah, I can never remember. Everything over that is at the market price, which is whatever the market dictates, which could be $37. It could be $97. It's. All of it. And so that's kind of how our pricing structures. These handouts go in much more detail, explained a lot better than I can. But the big conversation everybody's having with BPA is whether they're calling post 2028. When this contract expires and we re-up and have those high water marks. And from conversations I've had with BPA, with our associations we're part of, with our neighboring. Utilities, I just met with them this morning and my, us, Skamania, Clickitat. Hood River Co-op. Wasco and North Wasco meet regularly to make sure we're kind of all on the same page. So us, who averages. Four and a half megawatts is also in the same conversation as North Wasco PUD that averages like 3,000 megawatts. I mean, totally different spectrum. It looks like BPA is gonna be nice to us and pretty much cover all of our demand. Our high water marks at that tier one. Up to probably closer to that five megawatts. But the question then comes with the ports growth, which we all want. But if they bring in businesses, whatever happens, if they need, it brings in five, 10, 15 megawatts, we're paying all of that at that tier two price. How do we pass that on to the business and not the residents? So Roger Klein, who's the general manager of the North Wasco, North Wasco PUD. Has invited me to come sit with him and kind of essentially talk over how he dealt with Google. And they did it on a contracted basis. Yes, essentially this is what you're gonna pay us. So he's gonna kind of walk me through how they got to that. So meeting's not set yet, but that's gonna happen here shortly.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, gosh, yes, yeah.
Well, it's like somebody's already done this.
Exactly.
I don't have what it is now on my own, but we're just a lot smaller scale. And that tier one, tier two is based off of that high watermark.
Correct.
So we're, you know, five megawatts or whatever. And these, these people that are using. 400 megawatts. I mean, do they have a high watermark that's much higher?
And then, yes, they do. Yes.
Cause they're not, otherwise it'd be 385 would be a tier two. Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
And, and the struggle is. There are essentially three groups, BPAs trying to make happy. There are. The people that just keep growing and growing and growing. Hood River, North Wasco, people are moving in, business is coming in, people want more power. And then there's the people who relatively the same where they were 10 years ago. I would say maybe Wasco, kind of a Mopin. Thai Valley area where not much growth has happened, relatively the same. And then there's people who are actually shrinking. So they're trying to make all three of those groups happy, which is impossible.
Thank you for looking into what's happening to help pass it on to the business because I knew that that was a concern about growth.
Yeah, they pretty much say, yeah, just do a contract, make them pay for it.
Well, that was interesting. Mark, Mark Johnson mentioned, what we were talking, kind of a sidebar conversation about energy consumption. It's a majority of the power use goes to business.
Yeah.
Industry is not home.
Well, so even, even now of the, our average high water mark is four and a half. I would say. Over three of that is the businesses. I mean, the actual residents of Cascade Locks is maybe one and a half.
So with that in mind.
I mean.
It makes sense that the people that are using that are gonna pay the higher.
Yeah.
Basically going to those bit mining. Down in the prison park.
Yeah, our two biggest users are the, what is her name? The Bitcoin cryptocurrency miner and Bear Mountain, cause they have their electric for us.
That's this other business is gonna bring employees. I mean, Bear Mountain has staff.
Yes.
But Bitcoin mining.
Bitcoin brings in zero employees.
And we have an intergovernmental agreement with the port. That we provide them with electricity. And that was signed in 2013. Of course, it was at four megawatts.
Yeah, I see.
But in the spirit of. Going forward, we gotta look at. Increasing that.
Yeah, and I mentioned updating that IGA with this new project, cover all of our bases.
And we have to be very careful in working with the port. Work in conjunction with them and help them because. Under ORS 777 230, a port may design, erect, complete, operate and maintain all necessary hydroelectric. Steam generating, electric, oil, gasoline or other power producing plants or systems. For the person, the purpose of generating electrical current for lighting and power purposes, which means. We don't treat them right. They just make their whole plug on us, build their own power plant. The city be all about mine. That would be who's us to work with the port.
Agreed.
Great. And that whatever we're doing, that takes big power, obviously go be written. Contingencies based upon the new substation. Should. Delays and delays and delays happen. We can't give what it we don't have.
Right. Yeah, a lot of this, we, we have to get this updated up.
Right.
Is there any requirement, is the, the company that wants to come in right now at like six? Would we be able to meet their power demand, the current?
Their initial demand, yes.
Initial.
We, like I said, we can go up to 14. Probably in the coldest days of. December, we were probably using seven, seven and a half. So we have the room.
But they probably don't wanna come in unless they know that we're gonna be able to offer them the ability to expand.
Correct.
Which means.
That one building takes 3.6 or 3.7.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
The one building.
And, and let's say we're getting a new one, so two and all the abandoned buildings downtown are thriving. Let's look at another five to seven megawatts. For city development that we want to happen as well as a big. So. That's why this new substation is so important.
Why we're looking at the biggest one we can afford. That's not a brand new one. It'll take seven years to get here. Cause they are on backboard. Local upcoming meetings. LOC Day at the Capitol on the 25th. So I'll be there all day with Mayor Fallon, Councilman Miller, hopefully Emily Baker, I don't think you'll be able to make it. We'll come back and report. It'll be good. The Hood River County Edge Group, which is us, the port of Cascade Locks. Port of Hood River, City Hood River and Hood River County have meet every two months to kind of discuss what's going on, what kind of economic development's going on in that. By, by monthly meeting is Thursday, so we'll be in Hood River. So we'll be heading to that Thursday afternoon. Friday, I have virtual meetings with staff from Representative Blumenauer as well as Senator Whitey to do a meet and greet, help them on projects and see where they can help us. My, again, my main focus is getting whatever I can. A discounted off that BPA station, because I don't wanna pay quarter million dollars for a piece of junk. That's just, it's literally a piece of junk. So I. That's my goal. Whether I'm successful, I don't know, but that's my goal. And then on February 2nd, the Public Power Council, which is kind of the biggest. Electrical utility association that covers pretty much all of Northwest. And kind of guides discussions with BPA for all of us as their board meeting in Portland on the 2nd. So we're going to that, followed by the Oregon. Municipal Electricity Utilities Board meeting. Same hotel. So there are nine. Cities that also have electrical utilities. Most of them are on the west side. I think only ones on the other side of the mountain are. Umatilla and Hermiston. But most of them are along I-5.
And just briefly for the new people, I know Mayor Tom explained it. Well, I mean, which can, even though we pay BPA money, we have our own. Substations. That's what we have. So we make money. On power used. So somebody else might explain that better than I just.
Where are you though?
We are, which is not, which is not common for small towns. So. This, this time spent on utilities is very important.
Yeah, it, it, this utility takes up a lot of my time. A lot.
And it could be potentially a pretty good revenue source.
Exactly.
I mean, how much was it? A hundred thousand dollars per megawatt?
Yeah, for, for each additional megawatt sold, rough. Profit for the city, profit is about a hundred thousand dollars for each megawatt.
And let's get more megawatts in here.
Yeah.
On top of that, then we also have like six, which is about 40,000 square foot, so it's a family that's costing a lot of money. So it's a, it's a big win for everybody.
And I just wanna throw this out, that I would be proud if our city hall had solar panels on it as we look to the future. And I don't know. As we look at new construction or talking to builders, if that. You know, having them research that as well, if that benefits us, because I think solar power can bring power into the grid. Solar panels. Anyway, that's just.
The Hood River County Energy Council already sent somebody here who was reviewing the building.
Right. That'd be great. But I'm thinking as we look to, to the future of clean energy as well. Right.
I do, I do a couple of things that popped up that didn't make actually in the printed version. One of them was that February 23rd meeting with. The port. Did we decide that was a workable date? Or do we need an email to go out?
That's workable.
Works for me Thursday night.
Okay, I, I just wanna, I wanna make sure we had an answer.
Bradford Island Restoration Board. They sent us out a list of dates of when we're gonna meet.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But they have some exact dates yet.
Okay.
But it's, it's gonna be in February.
Well, all right. I, I will work with Foga and Jeremiah. I'll use that as a tentative date for now. I know Pete wanted to try and do some kind of informal one-on-ones and Sean and Pamela, we'll, we'll sit down and do one-on-ones. Get to know each other, get you guys up to speed as best we can. So I'll reach out to you. But I, you know, I'm, if I'm not in the meeting, I'm, I'm open to come chat with me. If any questions. I'd rather you come chat with me and not her and my staff, so.
I can attest. He'll answer your email.
I, I may not have the answer, but I will respond and get back to you with an answer as soon as I can.
Thank you.
And then, then you have to go on the IT stuff?
I reached out then today. They wanna do a deeper dive.
That was Redcom?
Redcom, Redcom. Yes. So I need to coordinate that with our current IT provider. They wanted to get in and take a look at our servers, so. And kind of assess what, what we need. It's both, both equipment and then how we organize things, so.
Right now, everything's working though?
Everything's fine right now. Yep. And, and.
How did you guys get it back online?
It was a corrupted file on the server, right? Okay. A bigger hammer, bigger hammer, yes. Essentially, he, he had to reset, re, uh. Uninstall, reinstall, rewire everything. It, it was.
So your current IP guy was able to get.
Yes.
How long did it take from the time it was telling them?
About what, four days? About four days.
It went into two different weeks, so most of one week and part of another, so I would say probably close to seven business days.
Seven, seven business days, I think it was that long. There's a lot, um and and part of that is, I think the city just has not invested in its own I T infrastructure. Lots of money to spend.
Yeah, so is it possible, you think that we might go, okay, do you know, work with the I T guy that you've got?
It's possible, yes.
Update and uh the hardware software that we have.
It is possible, yes, I I still think we should, because we don't actually have a contract on file for our current I T person, they've just been doing it since the eighties, literally since like nineteen eighty-five.
They have computers?
I, exactly, I don't know, it was more than, it's my house.
Does everyone shop?
Yeah. That's what I love to actually be a state of perspective. He was, he was just born. So I actually want to put R F P out there and see what.
It just seems like it's, it sounded like it was a relatively easy fix, but it took us almost seven business days because of that, apparently, you know what I mean, that's that's agree, gotta be frustrating, sure, you and your staff.
Yes.
You know.
Yeah, I I, yeah, our our lives depend on them now, so.
That it?
That is, oh, uh finance reports, I was, Dave Peterson and I were hoping to have um uh finance reports, we got July's done today, I didn't want to throw it on you. So July's will be in your March, your first March one, and then August should be in your March twenty, no, February, sorry. Uh January's will be in February twenty third, and August will be in February twenty seventh, so we are making progress, we're getting there, so. Yeah.
Alright, so Mayor and City Council comments.
Alright.
Mayor, show.
Well, welcome, uh congratulations, and really, I think it's amazing that we have, like I said earlier, we really outstanding candidates for the positions we have available, so I'm really happy to see that we actually have a whole city council, it's been a long time since I feel that we actually had fulfilled, so that's a a real step in the right direction, so welcome. John, thank you for coming, Tess, thank you both for being here to uh give us update about the fire station and what's been going on there, and the main boss, I really appreciate you guys being there. And really, that's uh all I've got.
Pam, John, welcome to the to the madhouse here. It's, sometimes it's frustrating, but it's mostly rewarding, there's a lot of great work that needs to be done here. Michael, thanks staff, we have a a great staff here, they provide us with all this information. Uh and keep us on track, uh they work hard, we have the best staff of all the cities in the state. When you talk with Representative Blumenauer's staff, will you make an invitation to have him come visit us?
Would you?
Him and uh us and the port.
Yes.
I think if we could get him here, that'd be great. Let's see. Uh as far as the museum, Brittany Churchwell, who was the curator and did all of our cataloguing stuff, uh her husband got a new job up in Ellensburg and promotion, so we are now without a curator, Janice is taking on that, uh she doesn't seem to want to put a new person in there yet, until after we go through budgeting and stuff. Uh David Norman is a new member of the museum board. Uh so we welcome him there. Uh the column buried, that we have purchased.
Oh, yes.
For the cemetery, do we have any updates on that for?
Um, yes, uh they uh oh, probably at least a month ago now, they called, they said it was ready for delivery, and I notified Sheldon, and I haven't heard anything since, so I will call up with them.
Alright, so we're gonna get it delivered.
Yeah.
Alright, that's good. That's it, I'm good.
Sure.
Council member. I want to thank John and Tess for being here and all you do, and again, um let us know when we can help, because you certainly help us, thank you to staff for everything you do, and my question's getting answered, and Jordan as well, and um thanks for everybody who took the time to put in their application and thought about coming here, it was a very difficult decision, and I welcome you, I'm excited um about this, I mentioned the committees, I want to thank the committees, if they're watching, committee members, it's again unsung heroes, sometimes it's it's doing work that nobody sees, and I appreciate that, and I welcome you as well, committee members, to um ask what, how we can help guide you, and hope we will know more in our planning session, and then um invite committee members to come to these meetings, or anything that you heard tonight that might be appropriate. The chamber, just want to put that out there, and um again, uh thanks to everybody that you have helped me to learn to go to different meetings where I'm learning things, I I've had one-on-ones with Butch, you know, and I appreciate all the information that I'm getting, so I'm excited, again, to the port, Jeremiah and Olga, that's what I forgot. I am so excited for us to be planning together, hopefully, um and a collaboration that can benefit both of us, um because you bring things to the table that we don't have, and sometimes funds that we don't have, properties we don't have, but it is all part of the city of Cascade Locks, so I'm very excited for us to collaborate, so again, ask us what we can do for you.
Oh, let me, I forgot to thank John and Tess, and Tess was in the back of the ambulance, that knocked over, and she, they hauled me up to get my gold letter taken out. They did a great job.
Okay. First, thanks Chief Logan, and the support and the vision that you provide through the fire department, and what you are bringing to update us and to guide us into being a productive fire department within the community. Um I'd like to thank all the applicants and their support of the community to ensure that we're moving forward. Uh I I would like to remind the council that we are in a position of leadership within the community, and it's our responsibility to demonstrate composure and the respect that we expect out of our um members in the community. Um secondly, I'd like to start a discussion about moving forward on finding the means to support a parks and rec system in whatever manner that might be. Um talking to members of the the community, um children are having to go to uh White Sam and and Hood River, and not being able to play home games in our own community, and that is there's a system set up with the Hood River Parks and Rec, that we could, we could do that if we wanted to be a part of that, and obviously, that's a huge undertaking to make that happen, or work to figure out how to get those events and that community support here locally.
Council member Pam? Um I want to thank every one of you guys for everything that you've been doing, staff that I don't even know yet, but it could all happen with all of that, and um thank you for John and Tess and all of the volunteers, um I'm humbled and I'm honored to be able to serve with you guys, I have listened to meetings, and I speak how you operate, and um I'm glad I sat at the same table with all of you.
Thank you. Council member Sean?
I want to just uh say thank you for your vote for me, um I know it was a tough decision, it didn't look like an easy call one way or the other, um I want to thank John for being doing well for the whole support of us and our community.
Alright.
Eric, one of the first meetings I did have when I got here is with the Parks and Rec Director, and he's he's all for Cascade Locks joining back up, it would attack the vote of the people, because it would be a tax to rejoin that special district, so. But but we, but we can definitely pursue it if that's what the council wants to do, so.
Um possibility.
Yeah.
Jordan, we have a standing committee of a park and rec committee, do do we have any members on that committee?
I don't think so, I've never, I can hear it we do, but I've never.
They can only be dissolved by repeal of the ordinance that created them, so we have a committee that is empty, and that might be part of our planning, it's the Howard Villas. Pardon?
Smart budget.
Do all committees have to have them?
Well, they can't do anything without a budget.
We have something, well, we do get funds, or I say we, but it's something that we can add.
Right, okay.
Certainly, absolutely. Alright, first of all, uh always thank you to staff, you guys are amazing, and uh keep all of us on track, moving, and thank you to John and Tess, you know, um for your presentation and for everything that you do, um it's immensely appreciated. Love the report as well, keeps everyone informed, and Jordan, appreciate you going to all these meetings, and you're just, I I think you're doing an amazing job, so I really, really appreciate it. Um thank you to everyone who applied and for the open positions, um it was a really, it was it was not a light decision, it was really, really tough. But I appreciate everyone who applied, um thank you for stepping up and willing to be a part of the council, and it is an exciting time, we've got all sorts of, all sorts of ideas, and and this whole council is amazingly diverse, and I'm really excited and looking forward to our planning, and um looking, I'm really excited about Cascade Locks in general, so I am in. But I I I feel good about it, so Pete, thank you, um you and Jordan for going to a meeting, I was unavailable that day, and so Pete was able to stand in, and so thank you for that, and then um Butch, I thank you for all your count, your, how many councils are you, or not councils, but you're a lot, so super appreciate that. So thank you for that, and just thank you for being here, and I guess can we get a motion to adjourn?
You can adjourn.
I second. Council member Emily Baker, Emily Baker.
I.
Kathy.
I.
Keller.
I.
Miller.
I.
Tweet.
I.
And Compton.
I.
Mayor Tom.
I. Alright, thank you.
May I give a long? This is an other.
Come on.